Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'd like to call the City Council Regular Business Meeting for Tuesday, September 23, 2025, to order. Here this evening with me are City Attorney James Haney. We have our City Manager Blair King. So yes, we have our City Clerk Christine Brown, Ben helping over with IT. And City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Christine Brown, City Clerk. Please state for the record if you're present after I call your name. Mayor Matthews?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quitzland?
Present.
Councilmember Deeds?
Present.
Councilmember Fantrey Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Hytopolis?
Present.
Councilmember Morawaki?
Present.
Councilmember Schneider?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd also like to read the Suquamish Land Acknowledgement. Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hallowed by some sad or happy event in days long vanished. Chief Seattle, 1854. We would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is within the ancestral territory of the Suquab, people of clear saltwater, Suquamish people. Expert fishermen, canoe builders, and basket weavers who Suquab live in harmony with the land and waterways along Washington's central Salish Sea as they have for thousands of years. Here, the Suquab live and protect the land and waters of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855. Okay. And we'll do approval of the agenda. Councilmember Morawaki?
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. I move approval of tonight's agenda as presented.
A second.
Great. Motion made by Councilmember Morawaki, seconded by Councilmember Fantrey Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, seeing no opposition, we'll move to Conflicts of Interest. Council, do we have any conflicts of interest this evening? Okay, none there. All right, now we are on to presentations. Our first is to approve a proclamation declaring September 29th to October 5th, 2025, as a week without driving. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor, and I will make the motion.
Great.
I move to approve the proclamation declaring September 29th through October 5th, 2025, as the week without driving, and add it to the annual proclamations that may be signed by the mayor without further council action.
Thank you.
Great. Motion made by Councilmember Schneider and seconded by Councilmember Morawaki. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Schneider?
The proclamation by the City Council in the city of Bainbridge Island, Washington, by the City Council of the city of Bainbridge Island, Washington, declaring September 29th through October 5th as a week without driving. Whereas, as the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics estimates, the cost of owning a car is approximately 72 cents a mile, with average household spending on transportation reaching $12,296 a year in 2024. Many people cannot afford the cost of a car, and nearly a third of the people in the U.S. do not have a driver's license, either because of their age or a condition that does not allow them to drive. And whereas access to mobility is a fundamental part of health and community connection, allowing islanders to reach education and employment opportunities, medical services, shopping, recreation, and to visit family and friends, and is one of the state's six transportation system policy goals, including investing public dollars to improve the movement of people throughout the region. And whereas transportation represents the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the United States and is the second-largest source of emissions on Bainbridge Island, and in order to meet our state and city's greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, we must reduce emissions in our transportation sector. And whereas, in addition to greenhouse gas emissions, cars also create tire dust that can enter watersheds and have negative human health impacts, have necessitated freeway expansions that have been detrimental to neighborhoods historically home to communities of color, and require impervious services for parking, all of which have contributed to transportation being an important environmental justice concern. And whereas, going a week without driving is a great way to understand how we can improve our current transportation system to better meet the needs of Washingtonians and Bainbridge Islanders, and improve and enhance transportation options such as transit, biking, and walking pathways as key strategies for enhancing mobility for all road users. Now, therefore, on behalf of Ashley Matthews, Mayor of the city of Bainbridge Island and of City Council, we do hereby proclaim September 29th through October 5th, 2025, as week without driving. And I encourage all residents to join in this challenge in order to understand the barriers non-drivers experience in accessing our community. And Marsha Cutting will be receiving this.
Thank you for doing this. And I hope that you will try to do at least a day without driving. A week is really tough. I get that. And I want to add that, for me, this is kind of a personal issue because one of the things I've learned serving on the Governor's Committee on Disability Issues and Employment is that the largest single barrier to employment by people with disabilities is a lack of transportation. So, thank you for this.
Thank you. Next, we will present the proclamation declaring the month of September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic and Latinee Heritage Month. And I am going to get to read the proclamation. Let me make sure we don't have a motion first. Nope, okay. I'm going to read the proclamation. A proclamation by the City Council of the city of Bainbridge Island, Washington, declaring the month of September 15th to October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic and Latinee Heritage Month. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month began as Hispanic Heritage Week, signed into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson in 1968. In 1988, the commemorative week was expanded to a month by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, Chile, and Belize celebrate their independence during September. And whereas, Latinx people are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages, Hispanic people are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain. And both identities can include people from indigenous African, Asian, and European ancestry. And whereas, as language evolves to become more inclusive, Latinee is used as a gender-neutral or non-binary term, though there is some ambivalence about its usage within Spanish-speaking communities. And whereas, many Hispanic and Latinx people come to the United States as immigrants and endure various forms of targeted systemic and social dehumanization. And whereas, despite this, throughout the history of the United States, Hispanic and Latinx people have shaped the country and Bainbridge Island in countless ways through government, law, agriculture, the arts, education, technology, architecture, cuisine, social justice, exploration, and more. And whereas, we appreciate and honor the achievements, contributions, and humanity of Hispanic and Latinx people in our community and beyond, and continue our efforts to ensure Bainbridge Island is a welcoming, inclusive, and safe place for all, especially those facing prejudice and exclusion. Now, therefore, I, Ashley Matthews, Mayor of the city of Bainbridge Island, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic and Latinee Heritage Month in the city of Bainbridge Island, and call upon all residents to observe this commemoration through activities and programs that enlighten and inspire our understanding of the rich heritage of our Hispanic and Latinee families, neighbors, and friends. Dated this 23rd day of September, 2025, Ashley Matthews, Mayor. And with that, I am honored to get to present this to Martita May, who is affiliated and does so many things, but affiliated with Kitsap Immigrant Assistance Center, which we call KIAAC, and Kitsap Mesa Redonda, as well as being a community connector and advocate for the Hispanic and Latinx community. Thank you for all you do, Martita.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, distinguished Mayor Matthews, City Council. Good evening, buenas noches.
Buenos noches.
Thank you so much for this incredible proclamation. We are incredibly honored and humbled to receive the Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month proclamation. This recognition means the world to us because it reminds us our fiestas patrias, celebration, food, amazing gastronomy that we contribute to this country. It reminds us our heritage, our contributions, as Mayor Ashley Matthew mentioned. So many, we contribute in so many ways to this nation that we love. This is our nation too. So just wanted to express our gratitude. And everybody, it means a lot to us that our Heritage Month has been recognized by the city of Bainbridge Island and is just always humbly accept this proclamation. And they will remind us our ancestors. They remind us our families, hard-working families that have been contributing to this country. They contribute opening businesses because they have their own business. They bring the economy, elevate the economy of the United States. We elevate the economy of the United States. I'm just going to say, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is public comment. In-person public comment is accepted at this time on any topic of public interest. Each commenter will have three minutes. Public comment is not taken on individual agenda items during the meeting, so this is your opportunity. Thank you. Six calculations here. Okay, first is Sarah Blossom.
I just want to mention a few things to start that I think would be good for you guys to keep in mind. It's something that I heard when I was on council during our retreats that have stuck with me over the years. It was from Ron Holfield from Strategic Government Resources that used to facilitate our retreats. And every year, he would repeat several times that trust is largely a product of predictability. And I would say that watching the city, you guys are becoming less and less predictable. He would also say that it's as important to do things right as it is to do the right thing. And so that's what I really want to talk about tonight. I'm sorry, I chair the Planning Commission, speaking for myself. But I am going to speak about my experience on the Planning Commission, specifically with the ordinance that is on your agenda tonight. I appreciate that you guys recognized how long our meeting went and how hard we worked. We should not have ever been put in that position. We should not have been trying to amend and deliberate on an ordinance at 1:00 a.m. Everyone knew that the public participation meeting was going to be well-attended. I did not appreciate hearing that one of you suggested to my colleague on the Planning Commission that I should tell people who spoke at your meeting that they could not speak at ours because we could just watch the video. It's completely inappropriate, and it's outrageous that anyone would think that that's okay. We were presented with an ordinance that was not in a form we're typically looking at as a footnote to a table. It's very difficult to try to improve upon a footnote to a table at 1:00 a.m. This whole process has jumped ahead of, it's impacting our comp plan update. We have talked about height. We have talked about FAR. We've also talked about step backs and trying to maintain character. We have not talked about parking. And this one project is going to dictate how an entire neighborhood looks before the Planning Commission has even had a chance to have that discussion. And this is also happening after, I think, two years ago now, another project applicant who had gone through the correct process, paid the fees for a comprehensive plan amendment, was put on hold because they needed to wait until the comprehensive plan process was finished. They were also proposing affordable housing. It just doesn't look good. I hate to criticize you guys. I hope you know I always try to come up, be positive, offer suggestions, be supportive. But it's becoming harder and harder because your actions are starting to impact the Planning Commission. And I don't appreciate it.
Thanks, Sarah. Next is Scott Patterson.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Scott Patterson. I'm a community and political organizer with UFCW 3000. We are a labor union representing 56,000 grocery, healthcare, processing, cannabis, and retail workers across the state of Washington. I am here today on behalf of our members who work at Bainbridge Island Safeway and Town and Country Stores to offer support for this affordable housing project. Our union bargains strong contracts with meaningful wage increases. But even with that, the cost of living, especially housing, has made it nearly impossible for grocery workers to live here in the community they serve. Over the past few weeks, I've spoken directly with our members at Safeway and Town and Country about this project. I want to share some of what they told me. Corey Churchill, a deli leader at Town and Country, said, "I tried to find housing, but it was impossibly unaffordable. I checked out the apartments up the road, but they were way too expensive. So now I live in Silverdale. It takes me 40 minutes to get to work in the morning and 90 minutes to get home. Even though I pay less than rent, my fuel costs are now a big financial strain." Victor Chapman, who works at Safeway, shared, "Because of high housing costs on the island, I'm only able to afford Rent in Bremerton, which is 45 minutes from the store. I tried to live on the island, but apartments were way too expensive. As a result, I have a lot of wear and tear on my car and high costs from commuting." And Lauren Weiss, also works at Safeway, told us, "I live with my dad because housing costs are far too high on the island. The only apartments in my price range are in Port Orchard." These stories aren't unique. They reflect the reality for dozens of workers on the island. And when I spoke with our members about this project to raise awareness, their eyes would light up with hope and optimism of being able to live close to work. This project will be life-changing for so many workers and their families. And at the center of this discussion is the very definition of community. And too often, working people are left out of that definition when they are the very people who make a community run. They allow us to put food on the table, dine out, enable our kids to have a great education, take care of our elders, repair our vehicles, and so, so much more. These are critical contributions to Bainbridge Island, and these workers deserve the chance to live here too. On behalf of our members, I urge the City Council to approve this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Don Rooks. Oh, and I thought, so we can't, we have to be really respectful of clapping because there are different views in here. We don't want anyone to feel like they're wrong because we want to hear from everyone equally. Don Rooks. It's you, yep.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I'm a 35-year Bainbridge resident. I haven't really gotten involved in city politics. And personally, I really don't want to. But I've become aware of some things that I think need to be clarified. And I'm sort of dangerous because I have a little bit of information, but I'm not really fully involved and fully educated on all of them. There are three things that I think are really important. One is, I understand there is a water study going on about the aquifer under Bainbridge Island, which is a sole-source aquifer. I'm aware that, I'm thinking 15 years or so ago, there was a study, and that study was completed after the comp plan. So it was like kind of putting the cart before the horse. And I'm afraid that that's what's going on right now with upzoning and all the discussion about affordable housing and where it's going to be built. Do we have enough water? The water is critical for our future. I mean, Cape Town, South Africa ran out of water. We don't want to run out of water. We don't want to overbuild. We need to be aware of what our resources are. Secondly, the 625 project. I am not in favor of the location. I don't have anything technical. It's just a hunch that that's a really busy corner. And for folks, you know, living in affordable housing in a three- or a four-story building right where all of that ferry traffic is going on just doesn't make sense to me. Now, I've heard that other affordable housing locations have fallen through or haven't come through, and that this is the only one that's viable right now. I don't know what's going on with the Bethany Lutheran location. I know Vicky Browning. She was my manager at John L. Scott for eight years. I was under the impression that she was driving that and that that was going to go forward. But how come that isn't right at the top of the list? I don't know. Third, income ceiling. I read recently about a $20 to $25 per hour income ceiling for affordable housing. How can that be? I make over $25 an hour, and I'm a part-time substitute paraeducator with the Bainbridge Island School District. I am retired. I'm 74 years old. I don't have a pension. I am on Social Security, but I make more, and I would not be able to qualify for affordable housing.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Nancy Nolan. We had some really good music that Alan was playing for the, at the public hearing at three minutes. I don't have any music tonight, but we just want to be really conscious of that three minutes because there are a lot of folks, and we don't want to be here until 1:30 again. Nancy.
Hi, I'm a Bainbridge Island citizen for 26 years, and I'm speaking in favor of pausing the 625 project and doing further research on other possibilities for more workforce affordable housing in order to ensure that Bainbridge gets it right for our community. There's a lot of opposition to the spot zoning changes required to squeeze this project on this piece of land, as well as the size, management, and the income qualifications, as we just heard, of this proposed development on the busiest, most congested corner of our island, a corner used by many working people in our community of all different levels to commute into Seattle and beyond for their work. Some of them go two hours to get over there. For many reasons, there appears to me to be potential for a lawsuit here. That would cost the taxpayers yet more money to defend this project when there are so many other popular options. In addition to the issue of the proposed spot zoning exception that apparently does not align with the principles of our comp plan, there is a potential violation of city responsibilities by fast-tracking the purchase of the so-called notch property. Also, there are apparently questions about the city failing to do a proper RFQ and RFP for this notch property that was suddenly added to this proposed project to make it even bigger at a cost of $1 million. In addition to these potential legal questions, there's other questions many people have, including where is the extra septic plant capacity for this project going? And how much will it cost the taxpayers? Why was only LIHI's self-serving traffic study considered? Where is the city's independent traffic study? How will this affect parking and access to the ferry? Will this project is going on and after? I know a lot of work has already gone into researching this project. City money has been spent to make the project fit in that corner. That's the million. Council wants to stand up for the principle of affordable housing. That's nice. But all the work and adjustment that has already gone into this project does not change the fact that it's a bad plan, you all know it, to build a huge building on this site. The land is no longer free. You bought the notch property when council had to spend $1 million to have enough land there, and the units are more expensive due to the digging that's required to create an underground garage. It's now more expensive per unit than for the for-profit developments in other parts of Winslow, like the Wintergreen Project. Please, take a pause. Don't rush this until all these issues are fully vetted and all the other affordable housing options currently proposed. Are consistent.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Next is John Grant.
Greeting, members of the City Council. My name is John Grant. I'm the chief strategy officer for the Low Income Housing Institute, or LEHI. Our development staff recently toured the alternative site that has been proposed by some members of the community located at 251 Winslow Way West, and has been, which would have been a proposed hotel that did not materialize. We wanted to share some of our observations because there's a lot of talk about alternative sites. There are some similarities between these two sites. Both sites are located within downtown Winslow. Both have a 20-foot-plus grade change to arrive at 90 units. Both sites would require the council to enact the recommendations from the Planning Council Commission to increase the height limit for multifamily housing that is 100% affordable. In other words, the proposed ordinance helps both sites. And we encourage the council to schedule a public hearing so you can hear from the public and make necessary changes to the existing code. Now, we talked about the similarities between the two sites, but we also need to talk about the differences. The first will be obvious. The city already owns 625 Winslow Way. And the alternative site is privately owned with an assessed value of about $5.6 million. There has been some talk of a land swap, but this phrase grossly oversimplifies things. The value of the land exceeds the existing revenue available from the 0.1% sales tax for housing collected by the city, so an additional fund source would be required. The other option is that the city would have to sell 625 Winslow Way for private development. For folks who do not want a large building on the corner, this doesn't solve that problem. To get the maximum market value, you'd have to sell the land to be developed into a large commercial, multifamily, or private hotel. In other words, you would still wind up with a building on the corner. And once the city sells the land, you would lose significant control over how it gets developed. The owner of the alternative site has expressed that they would not purchase 625 Winslow. So the city would need to find another buyer. It may take the city a year or more to sell the land. There is a gamble that in those intervening years, the alternative site could be sold off, and then the city will have lost both locations. But let's assume it does work out. The city sells the land and buys the alternative site. We would need to start from scratch to do a traffic study, environmental testing, architectural design, which further delays the project. By then, we will have missed four to five funding cycles where it can often take one to two attempts with public funders. To seriously consider this option, it is very possible that by the time the city cuts the ribbon on an alternative site, it might be eight to 10 years from now. However, if we stay the course for 625 Winslow Way, it's possible that the building could open as soon as spring 2028. There are also concerns of higher development costs at the alternative site. It will require demolition of a large building due to grading. There are sewer concerns. And, and these issues would not exist at the 625 location. Moving this location will invite the same level of neighborhood concern as it did years ago. We will need to face the same issues presented by existing code. I urge you to schedule the public vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, David Schutz.
Good evening. My name is David Schutz. I'm a resident of Sunrise Bluff Lane in the northeast portion of the island. First of all, I'd like to make a commendation. That commendation is to the members of council in your capacity of volunteering. You are basically, well, in a four-year term, put in thousands of hours of time for very little remuneration. City staff, I believe, is well-intended. Like all volunteer activities, I think we do it with the hope that we're making things better. Maybe in a small way, we'll leave a legacy. I submit to you, if you approve ordinance number 25 tonight, you will be leaving a very bad legacy after your work here. This is a project that is bad from the start. You will be increasing density. You will be drawing upon an aquifer of unknown capacity, all what appears to be in a hasty attempt to increase density and perhaps to advance the project down at 625 Winslow Way. The process of getting where we are tonight is, in some respects, shameful. We had public meetings, all right. I went to two of them. I was not sure whether or not I was going to a timeshare presentation or perhaps the HR department trying to explain to me while we're going back to five days away a week in person in the office. It was absolutely a sales job. To that, I condemn city staff and a couple of council members here tonight were present in those meetings. That was, in some respects, a travesty. I told my friends and neighbors about it at the time. The state recognizes that Kobe is a sole-source aquifer. It's important to all of us. I am dismayed that while the state has gone forth to identify us as the only city in the state with that, that the city has not sought any type of waiver from the state in terms of development requirements, et cetera. It seems to me they're offering you an opportunity, but somehow the city, council, staff seem to be steamrolling forward. Don't drain our aquifer. Vote no to an increase in density as proposed in the ordinance. Thank you.
Next, Mary Kate Kirsten.
Hi, I'm Mary Claire Kirsten, 145 Ferncliff. I'm here tonight because I am concerned about the long-term sustainability of our sole-source aquifer. I don't understand why you are seemingly not concerned about it. Following the comment period last week, you never once suggested a credible conservation solution. Instead, you reiterated an imperative to increase Bainbridge Island's population substantially. We have a serious problem. Your constituents understand the problem and you are ignoring it. My request is, following the comment period tonight, can you please explain to us how an increase in our population will solve our current unsustainable drawdown of the sole-source aquifer? And I have time, I can repeat that. Please, explain to us how an increase in our population will solve our current unsustainable drawdown of the sole-source aquifer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Shepherd and then Marsha Cutting. And there's some seats up front now if, if there's anybody who didn't have a seat wants to sit.
Hello, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jeff Shepherd. My wife Heidi and I have lived on Bainbridge Island for the last 31 years and for the last 26 years have had the joy and privilege of serving Bainbridge communities as owners of Blackford Bakery. Heidi and I want to share a little of our experiences over those years. When we first came to Bainbridge in 1994, we both had found work with Hollis Fay, the original owner of Bainbridge Bakers. You may remember her. We were able to take those jobs because we were both able to find housing we could afford to live in. At that time, there was a significant, significant supply of small houses, additional dwelling units, mother-in-law apartments, and other affordable options that were available for the folks that worked in the businesses that served the island. I myself rented a small two-bedroom house in Port Madison for $725 a month.
Jeff, talk to us though, so we can hear you.
Okay. Most of the other people we worked with, bakers and baristas, were also able to find local housing. Well, that was then. With market changes, demographic shifts, and the dwindling number of small housing units that are still available, it has become difficult for people like our workers to find a place to live near where they work. Of the 28 staff members we presently have, four live on Bainbridge and two of those with their parents. The rest commute from Paulsboro, Kingston, Silverdale, Bremerton, and beyond, taking up, and many driving as much as 45 minutes each way, contributing to the growing island traffic density and taking up valuable parking spaces in the Winslow core. One of the bakers who found a place on Bainbridge looked for seven months before finding something they could afford. While we cannot speak for all the business owners of Bainbridge, we can say that for the vast majority of us, the owners, the lack of affordable housing makes hiring and retaining staff increasingly difficult. And those are the very people we all rely on to keep our stores, shops, restaurants, and services running. How much better would it be for us all if the same people who checked our groceries, made our coffee, and recommended books for us to read could live among us, walk to work, and share in this wonderful community that they help create every day? Both Heidi and I understand there are potentially other opportunities to create affordable housing in Winslow, but this doesn't seem to be a this proposal or something else moment, but more of a this proposal and something else opportunity. We should embrace any opportunity we have for, no, sorry, excuse me, for surely no single project can meet the housing needs of all the folks who helped make living here such a pleasure. Let's look at this as a major opportunity to move forward on broadening and strengthening our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Marsha Cutting.
Good evening. I am here to ask you to keep the 625 Winslow project on track and to adopt the ordinance 2025-21. And this is important to me for a couple of reasons. I sailed into Bainbridge Harbor on the last day of November in 2012. I lived aboard my boat in a marina for the first two years, then decided that I needed to move ashore. So I searched and found an apartment that fit my budget. I thought, okay, I'm set. Two years later, I was hit with a 26% rent increase. Unfortunately, no one increased my social security or my pensions by 26%. So for the next two years, I searched to try and find an affordable, accessible house. My friends tried to help me. They, they'd post a picture of a really cute, basically like an ADU. It's only got two steps. Well, unfortunately, my wheelchair will not do two steps. So one of the things that I really like about the 625 project is that because of the height and the number of stories, this building by RCW will have to have an elevator, thus making every single unit at least potentially accessible. I mean, I'm only here because thanks to Housing Resources Bainbridge, I was able to buy one of the two affordable, accessible houses in the Ferncliff Village, the community land trust. And I am very grateful for that. And I want to speak up for others who cannot afford 26% rent increases. So I hope that you will go ahead with this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is April Ness and then Becca Biot.
Hello. My name is April Ness and I live on my boat in Eagle Harbor in the Dave Olnan Open Water Marina, which is really a mooring field. And I'm also a small business owner, an operator, and I serve the boating community. My boat is geared for off-grid living and I've owned it since 2013. And it has taken countless hours and money to get it to an off-grid, off-grid status. I have two, three solar panels, 440 watts each, which fuels a house bank 375 amp hours. I also have a diesel heater for the wintertime and it's gravity-fed, so it requires no electricity. And I have a two-burner stove oven that's fueled by propane, requires no electricity. I have a 100-gallon freshwater tank that I can, it purchased me at the last of approximately two months. And I have a composting toilet. So then it's the boat. I raised my son on this boat and homeschooled him. But now it's just me. And in November, this past November, we had a pretty big storm. It was a gale and I tried to get home in time, but I didn't. It was dark when I got home and the harbor was full of waves. It was sort of overwhelming. And I was rowing and it's this two-foot chop. And I got to the boat, I secured the deck, and here comes the boat. It is dragging anchor. And it hit me, the mooring line, and my, was my bow is attached to our line. And it bent my Samson post. And then I have fenders, I keep fenders because of this on each side of the boat, and it bounced along. And it was headed towards my neighbor's boat, Ted. And Ted's lived in the harbor for over 40 years and on different boats. And I called him, I was in a panic and I was pretty adrenaline, full of adrenaline. And he called me and said, I saved a scone for you. And so I breathed. I calmed down. And that's the kind of community that we live in. And I am grateful for my boat. And I'm grateful for the community of live-abords that I live with. And I'm grateful for the city council members in the 20 teens who listened to Dave Olnan and the other residents and created that and preserved that lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Becca Biot.
Hi, council. A little bit more on the same topic April was talking on, the Dave Olnan Open Water Marina. My husband and I have lived on a boat for 15 years, long enough that we don't really remember what it's like to live on land. And we've now lived in the Open Water Marina for about five years. We brought our now three-year-old, who's asleep on my husband there, home from the hospital to a boat. Off-grid boat life is all she has ever known. We love living in the Open Water Marina, but we do not live there because it is affordable. We live there because we choose this way of life. In fact, I would not necessarily call this life affordable. I know this mooring field cannot officially be low-income housing because the city is not offering housing. It is offering a sanctified place for someone to park the home they must first buy. Have you ever heard a phrase, there's no such thing as a free boat? Boats require blood, sweat, tears, and dollars to maintain. And to put a boat on a mooring ball, it needs to be off-grid ready. That means power generation, and it can't be an affordable air-cooled generator. Sufficient battery capacity, self-sustaining heat, waste-holding capacity, water tankage, and a smaller boat to get to and from shore. Without a laundry facility on Bainbridge, it's a trek to Paulsboro to wash clothes. For that, it's handy to have a car. And with a car, there's a fee for parking. Thank you, by the way, for the parking pass. It's awesome. Living aboard is not for everyone and living aboard off-grid is for even fewer. We commute in an open dinghy half the year in the dark and the rain, sitting on a wet seat. We have to be a little bit electrician, a little bit mechanic, a little bit plumber, and a little bit crazy. I wouldn't have it any other way. This is truly a unique living opportunity for those who seek it, but it is not a simple solution for someone needing low-income housing. I understand this is not what is actually on the agenda tonight, but I cannot speak about the agenda item, which is whether to hold buoys vacant while waiting for low-income applicants, without first explaining some context of life aboard. Because it is my opinion that the discussion about a 90-day or a 30-day hold completely misses the point. But since it is the point tonight, I'll agree with Chief Clark that it is, that in the unlikely event that the waiting list is empty and there is a vacant buoy, it is not a good idea to leave it vacant for any period of time. If we take our boat out for the weekend, there's a very good chance someone will be on our ball when we come home on Sunday night. As a community, we spend our summers shooing boats off of our neighbors' mooring balls, sometimes even in the time it takes them to go to the public dock to pump out. In the five years we've been here, there's always been a waitlist. These mooring balls are coveted and unique among the live-aboard community in the Sailor Sea. It would be such a waste to let them sit vacant while there's a waitlist of people eager to come in and start paying the city money. I'll leave you with this thought exercise. Please think about your own neighborhood. Would you enthusiastically support the city in keeping the houses around you vacant until the right applicants asked to buy them? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Priscilla Zimmerman.
Hi, Priscilla Zimmerman, Bainbridge Island. Currently, the city council and planning commission are moving ahead without proper community participation and input with the worst planning disaster in Bainbridge Island's history. It is a civic and infrastructure catastrophe that Bainbridge will undoubtedly never completely recover from. This ill-conceived, overcrowded project is located on the most expensive and ill-situated building site for affordable housing. This begins, begins the death knell for our downtown with a project that will greatly decrease our currently available downtown parking, a gateway cell block structure, and, and more difficult access to our historic downtown. Planners predict 50 additional vehicles beyond what the project will provide will need to be parked for project residents. While it is clear that Bainbridge is in, in great need of affordable housing, good planning practice does not advocate dense development at our most important civic corner and at the front door to our historic downtown. This is the most heavily trafficked and congested intersection in Kitsap County and is the gateway to and from our regional transportation hub. Politicians have ignored the community, knowledgeable planners, community leaders, and common sense. Our leadership has failed to educate themselves in sustainable planning and development and how to create a community with a livable, functional, viable future.
Thank you so much. Next is Kevin Federley. And then after Kevin, it's Ariel Bertley. Ariel, you're Ariel, you're signed up twice. Do you want to speak now or do you want to speak later? Okay.
I'm Kevin from the North End. I'm here to talk about your plan to upzone Winslow by 2,000 houses. And my comments come from conversations that I've had with a member of my extended family who happens to be a Seattle infill developer. So, once you upzone Winslow, there is a private bank located in Bellevue that will start buying houses. Uh, they'll buy from Level to Ferncliff. They'll even buy on Wing Point if you upzone it. They will outbid any local buyers, young families, elderly, whatever, because they have $250 million of cash and leverage. So what they're going to do is they inventory these houses for the future and um and then they start the development of infill. They'll bring in a design group. Let's say they buy a house on Level, you know, 50s Rambler. They'll design a six condo uh replacement for it. And those condos will be boxes. They will never build um family housing because it doesn't sell well. The individual, individual uh box of houses are what do sell. And they're going to be cement board, largely garage doors at the front. And uh, that's because they spend the money on the interiors. You know, quartz countertops, veneers, stainless steel, because that's what sells. Once they've got a permit from you, they're going to sell the house or they sell the property to a developer. The developer is going to build it. And they work very fast. Within a month, the house will be gone, all foliage will be gone and, and foundations will be put in. Four months later, they'll have six condos ready to sell. They're only going to sell five. The developer always keeps one of the condos as an Airbnb. This is how they pay themselves without having to pay taxes on the profits. They're going to sell those five condos. Um, and uh, so out of the five that are remaining, two get sold to Chinese investors because they're friends of the bank. And the investors will never occupy the house, the, the houses. They're never rent them. They're just trying to offshore their money out of the country. So that leaves three. Well, typically, my, my uh relative says, one, one gets, becomes a pied-à-terre, leaving two that become houses. So out of the one house lost on Level, you end up with two. And yet now you have a, a neighborhood that is, you know, not, you know, the neighborhood isn't a community anymore. It's a bunch of blocks. So I ask you not to be naive about what's going to happen to Bainbridge once you impose this uh um new zoning. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Kevin. Next, Ariel Bertley.
Good evening. Try to adjust this. Okay. I have, I'm going to be looking at my phone because I have everything on my phone, so thank you. Uh, tonight, I ask you to come to the table. Come to the table because transparency, fairness and trust are their foundations of good governance. Coming to the table means laying down our swords of division and lifting our sleeves for the work of collaboration. It means remembering who we are in an island of visionaries, innovators, artists, farmers, the Saquamish people, whose ancestral lands we stand on and neighbors who have always chosen to lead with imagination and heart. I come to this as a planning commissioner, trained in architecture and as someone who oversees 800 million in construction projects across the state of Washington. I know the value of careful planning and wisdom tells us we were not finished with our planning. The land at 625 Winslow is public land, my land, your land, and the ancestral land of the Saquamish. It should serve the whole community, not only as housing, but as a civic and gathering space for our families, teens, artists and neighbors. Our visionary artistic and farming based island has always been a torchbearer for thoughtful planning, from berry fields to conservation areas to our magical town centers. This is the jewel of Bainbridge, greeting all who come and go. The comprehensive and subarea plan for this site is not complete. The intent was to create a master plan and apply form-based code so the community could carefully shape what belongs at this gateway. That vision included plazas, building setbacks, civic gathering spaces and cultural recognition. Advancing a single project now cuts short that process. I am not opposed to housing here, but I am opposed to housing that fails to answer the call for civic and community space. Is this still on? And that relies on an outdated model we know isolates low income households. The current plan serves only households at 60% AMI and below. Experience across our country shows this risk perpetuating cycles of generational poverty, strong growth models, integrate a variety of incomes. And let us be clear, this site as planned is not suitable for families and families are what we need most. Our schools are shrinking in enrollment, yet this plan offers no meaningful green space, no safe play areas and no relief from noise, traffic or fumes. Other communities from Seattle to the Bay Area show us it can be done differently. They establish housing trust funds, access block grants and keep ownership of the land in public hands. If the city retains ownership, it can ensure true workforce housing for Bainbridge. Can I have just a few more seconds? Because I saw others had a little more time.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Um, that was, that was, because everybody had like up till then, that was 316 and I let somebody go till 310 was the most so. Um, Charlie Kratzser.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Kratzser. I live on South End, um, on Gang Market. And um, I, uh, three minutes is never enough. And I'm going to start with uh, one of the topics that came up after most of the people left last time was ways that we can get out of the, the, the water issue. And one of them was using an example from Jason McLennan, who's a very expert um sustainable architect on the island, has a really great demonstration project on Shell Shibe, which he lives in with his family of five. He's all self-contained and I personally also have a, I have a 4,000 gallon rainwater harvesting tank at my house, which takes back two thirds of my roof and covers my outdoor irrigation needs for about one third of the time. I need to refill it with, with um well water because the timing just doesn't work out for outdoor irrigation. I mean, because the rain comes when you don't need it and it doesn't come when you do need it in the summertime. So Jason himself has a 15,000 gallon cistern and my tank, which is 4,000 gallons, is eight feet by seven feet. So you can imagine the size requirements. And not to mention, if you use it for portable needs, you also have to filter and have UV radiation treatment. So it's a very expensive proposition to try and consider that a silver bullet for getting out of our, our water issues. So I'd also like to talk about something I'm sure no one else will talk about tonight, which is the survival of the Environmental Technical Advisory Committee. And I know most people probably haven't been paying attention, but E-TAC has only had one meeting in the past year. All the terms of E-TAC members expired long ago. Kobi has been sitting on applications for appointments slash reappointments for up to two years. Why? Imagine you apply for a job and you don't hear anything for over two years. I, I, and, and I never get an explanation. All I get is what I'm getting right now, which is blank stares. It's, it's pretty obvious that, that Kobe's trying to dissolve E-TAC without coming out and saying so. And if this is your intent, then why not just put it out in the open and have a discussion about it at a business meeting? Instead of just letting it wilt on the vine, which is what you've been doing for two years. E-TAC is just wilting. It has had nothing to work on. It hasn't had people who, there's one person who applied who has a PhD in geochemistry. He applied over two years ago and he has not heard anything about his application. So I don't understand. And if one of you could explain it to me, I would really treasure that. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Next is Stephen Hoskins.
Good evening, councillors. Uh, my name is Steve Hoskins. Uh, I live here in Winslow and professionally I work for a nonprofit as a housing and property tax economist. Um, I want to speak about the, uh, I think it's item AA for the ordinance for 625 uh and east of, of, of the highway. Um, essentially, I want to say it's a fantastic project from the perspective of housing economics. Um, 90 units, about 200 bedrooms, uh diverse typology, so you can get different types of households in there. Young families getting started, young service workers, retirees who are downsizing. I think the live work units are fantastic. Um, and the ground floor retail is going to really activate that corner. And I think at the planning commission hearing, there was talk of using the corner site for a community space or um some kind of a sort of cultural heritage facility, which I think is just fantastic. Um, sort of turning to economics here, uh, a lot has been said about sort of it's a really high value location. The land is really expensive there. What that actually means is that it's a really good location. Uh, and so this is reflecting the fact that it's close to jobs. It's close to the bus stop, it's close to the ferry. It's close to social and cultural opportunities, close to shopping in Winslow and, and up in uh, uh near Safeway uh and all the jobs there as well. So um, yeah, just think about the high cost of land as being a reflection that we're putting lots of affordable housing in a really good location. Uh, one thing that the market does when land values are high is it responds by building densely. It puts a lot of units on the very expensive land and builds tall. And the same principle applies to affordable housing. Um, so to the extent that we can with this, uh, the proposed ordinance, we can get more units on the site. Um, that's going to be really fantastic. Uh, this also has the benefit of uh, of uh being cheaper in terms of the per capita cost of, of, of building housing. You know, we're going to put lots of units on that site rather than fewer. So that's good if we're worried about property taxes. Uh, density is also better for water consumption. Basically, low density houses use a lot of water per, per capita. The, the, you know, smaller apartments tend to use less. So uh, this is great for that as well. And it's hard to make affordable housing projects pencil. Uh, uh, and Lehigh managed to do it with just a couple of layers of funding, um, which is nice and reliable and relatively few resources from Kobi. Uh, this, I think it's something in the order of 75,000 per unit uh at, at the proposal. That's all it's going to cost for us. We can rely on the state and federal funds for the rest. So this is a great way to get affordable housing with a low tax burden for uh people who live here. And then just a sort of slight side note, my reading of the municipal code 2.16.180, which is governing legislative changes to the zoning code, is that yes, you have to have a planning commission, uh, public hearing, but after that is done and they've made their recommendation, city council does not have to do that. Um, so you know, I, I was going to ask you to just move straight to uh, to, to voting on the ordinance, but I understand that Lehigh have requested that there be a public hearing and perhaps also you on the council feel that it would be good to have another public hearing. So to the extent that there's been criticism about, you know, this has been rushed, there's not enough opportunities for public input. It would be great if during your deliberations later, we could read into the record that this was requested by Lehigh and the councillors voluntarily are creating an opportunity for more public comment. So I urge you to approve the project to the ordinance and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next is Caitlin Lombardi.
Hi, I'm not Caitlin, but Caitlin had to leave because she couldn't get childcare.
Oh. Thank you. Thanks, Olivia. Um, do you know what she, do you want to speak for her? A second. Okay, you can do it later. Um, next is John Floden.
Hello, I hate public speaking, so apology is in advance. Um, I'm also Caitlin's best friend. We've known each other since first grade at Miss Roberts class at Blakely Elementary. Um, my name is John Flodeen. I live here on Bainbridge and I'm a fifth generation islander on both my mother and father's side of the family. I'm here today to urge the city council to keep the 625 Winslow Way project on track and um, and move ordinance 2025 dash 21 forward to a public hearing. Bainbridge is in a, is in a housing crisis and we need more affordable housing. This issue has plagued our community for decades and it's time to stop delaying and start building. Opposition to affordable housing on the island is nothing new. It's been here and happening since the incorporation back in the 90s. I've heard this familiar refrain, "We support affordable housing," but use time and time again to derail and delay any progress being made on this issue. In 2000, the Review reported on opponents of the Fort Ward Parade Ground Project, which objected to certain zoning waivers being granted. There was also a vocal opposition publicly claiming that the inclusion of affordable housing would detract from their property values. In 2016, King Five and others covered the opposition to the development of the Suzuki property, which uh would include affordable units. Then council member Ron Peltier is quoted by saying, "Redevelop existing property into affordable housing." That's what we really need to be doing here, not clear cutting the land. In 2021, the Review published an article concerning the Wintergreen Project, which was first approved all the way back in 2013. Concerns about not having enough parking there are now being echoed by the opponents of 625. In uh, 2022, The Island Wanderer covered the opposition to the Bethany Project. And just side note, my great grandparents donated that property back in the 1950s to the church, so I have a special connection to it. I was also confirmed at the church. Um, a group led by Ken Scott was circulating a petition saying that the building uh there is a violation of the city's comprehensive plan, which according to them would dramatically harm the island's character. This pattern is clear. Every time we try to make progress on affordable housing, opposition rises, often from the same voices, using the same arguments time and time again. Too often, these arguments lead to delays, costly lawsuits and lost opportunities uh that this community can't afford. So I ask, do we support affordable housing on Bainbridge? We cannot afford to repeat history. The city council must act decisively. Let's show that Bainbridge Island is ready to build a future that includes everyone, not just those who can afford to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Now Caitlin Lombardi. Cosplay, Olivia cosplaying as Caitlin Lombardi.
Yeah. About six inches too short. Um, good evening, my name is Caitlin Lombardi and I'm speaking as a community member today. I grew up on Bainbridge as Caitlin Moody in the 1880s and 90s. I went to Blakely, I had my first job uh serving coffee to commuters at commuter comforts and rode horses all day, every day, with some of you in this, in this room. I moved back to the island in 2020 when I was pregnant with my third daughter and we had just lost the restaurant we owned in Seattle to the pandemic. We would have qualified to live at 625 Winslow had it been there. And in fact, we're only able to find a rental we could afford because of my family's roots here. This community took care of us when we needed it. The least I can do is speak out in the hopes it will extend the same values of care and inclusion to other families. My second grader came home from school the first, for the first week of school last week and said, "We went to the library today and there's no librarian this year." Yes, in 2025, in one of the wealthiest zip codes in the United States, our public elementary school has to cut the librarian due to lack of funding. Dropping enrollment means dropping school budget and is a direct result of Bainbridge becoming too expensive for young families. We are living with this and with many other consequences of being an increasingly wealthy, exclusive, tourist-driven community where working people and families cannot live. It is not hypothetical. It is not too soon to understand the depth of the housing crisis and the way it hurts us all. It is not about a funding deadline. It is about 15 to 20 years too late already. We have recently heard from a portion of the community who do not want affordable housing at 625. While they have private meetings with private property owners about privately owned locations, they insist are quote unquote better. They simultaneously assert that there aren't, there has not been enough process transparency or analysis around 625. But many of us have been watching this process for nearly three years now, myself included. We have seen you on this council and deliberate and develop plans to meet our obligations to affordable housing as laid out in the Housing, Housing Action Plan. We have also watched as other affordable housing projects have been delayed and debated to death by just this kind of narrative we are seeing now. And most recently, we have watched as this narrative has succeeded in making 625 the marquee issue for city council candidates in a kind of race to the bottom for who can be against the project for the quote unquote best reason, whether those are based in reality or not. We are still watching and we support and applaud your efforts to make conditions possible for 625 Winslow. We know you have engaged in heart and heard numerous perspectives. heard numerous perspectives. We know you have made hard decisions and weighed options. We know you can, you have made commitments to increase affordability and that those commitments cannot be on paper alone. We are here all along, we were here all along because we support creating affordable options on Bainbridge, as so many of the opponents of 625 claim to. And we understand the complex and challenging path these processes must take to becoming a reality.
Thank you, Olivia. Next, Kate Sharafenovitch. You're going to have to correct me because that was a great one. Hi, I'm Kate Sharafenovitch. I live in the South End. I've been here 25 years. I have moved 29 times throughout the world. Can you speak to us, though, so we can hear you? Throughout the world. So I have been to 13 schools. I've been in many different cultures. What is difficult for me to understand are a couple of different things. First, the need for affordable housing. I have never lived anywhere where the town said, or city said, "We need to build affordable housing." People always commute. I commuted an hour into New York City in order to work there. I commuted everywhere. So that is what I don't understand. But, on the other hand, if you are really wanting to do affordable housing, why has there not been true affordable housing? So in Fort Ward, there was a whole series of houses that were built for affordable housing, but they started at $380,000. That's not affordable housing. Affordable housing, to me, when I was working in New York City, was the city owned an apartment building. It was rent-controlled. So if you are going to build something on your land, our land, it should be rent-controlled. I have, I don't understand how affordable housing is not controlled. It just keeps going up and up and up. That, to me, is not affordable housing. And there has not been any oversight as to the applications. Do you qualify for this? It's just been first come, first served to buy the property. So regarding the corner, a lot of folks have raised many different things: pollution, traffic, whatever. I'm all about water. So two or three years ago, a brand-new house, 10,000-square-foot house, burnt to the ground. And guess what? Our water went from 92% down to 41% for three weeks, and nobody around Blakely Harbor could use any water at all. I don't think we can build any more on this island due to the lack of water. Thank you. Thank you. Next is Indigo Painting. Okay, Leland Parker.
Hello, my name is Leland Parker from Agit Pass. I, I'm a little confused. I went on AI and did a double-depth study or questioning, and it's only 2% to 5% of the affordable housing projects in Washington State over the last five years involved a public entity giving the land to the project. Why do we have to give it away? Secondly, we talk about the value of that parcel of land. Land is worth nothing. It's just dirt with weeds on it. What gives land value is you giving it zoning. That's what gives land value. And affordable housing, what I see, I see, A, I'm opposed to the project in question, but on a positive note, have any of you been to the Paulsbo Project, Affordable Housing Village Project? And there's one that's in Vancouver. They built, this is a new project. They built 1,500-square-foot cottages, really pretty ones, and they rent for $1,500 a month. And that was done with private money. You may know more about it than I do. And how did they do that? You take a piece of land that's zoned for one house, let's say we have lots of quarter-acre lots around here and more that are zoned for one house. That's all its value is. And somebody comes to the city and says, "Oh, can I put 15 houses on it?" And you say, "Sure, we'll rezone it." All of a sudden, now that property's gone up 10 times in value. Well, no. What you do is you say, "Come to us with your acre parcel or whatever size parcel, and if you agree to make that affordable, you limit the rent to affordable level, we will give you the additional zoning for you to do that." And in return, you take CCNRs permanent where it's affordable housing forever. Now, what I see is employers want to provide housing for their employees. Great. Let them, let them do it themselves. I see a one-acre, a quarter-acre parcel comes to the city, and the city's already got a pre-approved set of, "If you build it this way, and you do this and that and the other, we'll give you this density." Three employers come, and they say, and they get a builder, and they say, "Oh, let's buy this piece of land, let's build this." The three employers each get four units for their employees. Not somebody from Seattle that has automatically applies or automatically qualifies. You're going to build these units. There's no guarantee whatsoever that anybody on this island will get them. So this way, and it's all done with private money, and the city could subsidize this with reduced fees. There are ways, and our community foundation could help finance it. There's so many ways to do it.
Next, Robert Jury. Oh.
Point of order.
Sorry about that. Would you mind? I'm sorry, Robert. Okay, come. Aw. Who's making the comment? Type up.
Okay, thank you. All right. My name is Chloe Jostin, and I currently live on Nectal Lane. I just recently moved on the 3rd of September in an affordable housing unit, and I'm so, so lucky that I got one. I've been counting my blessings every single day since. The living situation that I was in before, I was in what I guess could be called an affordable unit that was owned by somebody who doesn't live on this island, but it's not technically a living unit. It was infested with mice. I lived there for three years. And also, the septic tank consistently leaked. It was not an okay situation to be in, but I lived there because I was led to believe that was one of the best, living, cheapest places to be on the island. So I've gotten out of that situation, which is amazing, and I'm so grateful for HRB. And I think that having an opportunity for people, I'm a teacher on the island, I'm a preschool teacher, so I'm teaching some of the most vulnerable kids, the youngest population on our island, and I was not living in a good situation. And now I am, and now I can walk to work. And there's a lot of people on the island and off the island who are living in bad situations, who are coming in there, are essential workers. And so I really believe that this 625 project is so, so important, and I think it's going to house people like me and other people who are serving you your coffee and who are your waiter, and even more, who are your nurses, who can't afford to live here. I would also like to specifically say, keep the project on track, move forward with the ordinance 2025-21, and then also to please consider doing a public hearing on October 14th for ordinance 2025-21. And thank you so much for letting me talk early. I appreciate you all, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Chloe. Next is Peter, Robert Jury, oh. Robert Jury. For some, I called you Peter Jury for some reason.
Well, I'm an individual on the island by that name, so, but it's not me. Anyone else want to cut in front, Jury? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your attention. That is, I'm speaking to the elected officials here. I'm glad to appreciate the blessings of freedom of speech. Some of you may be aware that some elements of the government are not so inclined, especially if you like watching Jimmy Kimmel, you'll know what I mean. So I appreciate having a chance to talk directly to you all. My family and I have been on the island for a while, about 17 years, and have enjoyed it tremendously for many reasons, but there are some issues that seem to be a bit of a problem. As I came tonight to find a place to sit, I don't know how many of you on the council had the chance to observe this, but I observed a rather sizable number of people standing outside of the entrance to the city hall here, and they were carrying signs, some of which could be troubling. So anyway, rather than use my time just rambling freestyle, I have an email that I sent to each of you that I'm not sure whether you'll get it or not, so hopefully you will, but I'm going to read the contents just to make sure. Since a number of issues have been raised recently, please indicate individually your knowledge of, one, the past performance's problems/legal issues/conflicts of interest regarding the current city manager. By the way, this is an open agenda. It's not just strictly on the thing you're voting on tonight. Two, the punitive necessity of growth for Bainbridge Island seems to be taken as an assumption coming from on high, but maybe it's not really. And then, three, the implications of Bainbridge's sole-source aquifer status, which the state has recognized, and it could have serious consequences, which many people have pointed out already, so I'm just sort of reiterating what I put down here because I didn't know what other people might bring up. And your responses will be pursued actively in the next week, so I'm hoping to hear from all of you, but if I don't hear from one of you, I'll get in touch. And that's signed by myself, Dr. Robert Jury, and my spouse, Dr. Siri Hansen. And the subject line of my email, so you'll recognize it, is Trojan Horse. By the way, the blessings of freedom of speech were even extended to consultants tonight and people with proprietary interest in the proposals that you're considering. So that's really nice to see that there is complete freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Dr. Jury, next is Devin Taylor.
Hi, council. Can you hear me? Yeah, I grew up here on the island, and I moved back here in 2020. I was able to get a foothold on the island again, thanks to generous support from my family. Many people are not so lucky. I'm here to speak tonight in favor of the proposed affordable housing at 625 property and the zoning changes needed to bring this and future affordable housing to fruition. I urge the council to move this process forward. In listening to public comment on this project, I've noticed a familiar cycle of uproar that reminds me of how past similar projects died. I've heard numerous exaggerations about the scale and the scope of this project, fantasies about other uses for the site, and unironic suggestions to move the project back to Suzuki. I don't have time to interrogate the intentions behind these and other objections to the 625 project, but I would like to point out that intention is not the same as impact. And the impact, if the council does not separate fact from fiction, is the delay of this project and the delay, again, of affordable housing on this island. The fact of the matter is, the city is legally bound by the State Growth Management Act, and specifically HB 1220, to plan for population growth, prioritizing low- and middle-income houses. The idea that we can freeze growth, turning Bainbridge into some kind of protective enclave, is just another fantasy, one that risks plunging the city into choppy legal waters. Growth is happening. The role of this council is to ask what kind of growth is most appropriate, based on state law and local need. I believe the answer is clear. Affordable, walkable, high-quality housing is the most important development need on this island and has been for a very long time. Affordability is not just an ethical, moral, or legal concern, it is also a practical concern. An aging, mostly white-collar community is a vulnerable community. Of an affordable community that includes younger people with diverse skill sets is a more robust community. The more cooks, carpenters, teachers, and nurses we have, the better off we will be in times of crisis. I'll finish by reminding the council that housing delayed is housing denied. In my 37 years, I've known literally dozens of people who once lived here but had to leave because they could not afford housing anymore, losing jobs, friends, and communities as a result. This community is less for their not being here anymore. Please break this cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Matt Gents. I'm sorry, handwriting.
Thank you, and sorry about my handwriting. I'm here in support of 625. I'm not going to speak very long, but I live over on Baker Hill Road. I'm a renter. I moved to Bainbridge about three years ago, and I've had to move three different times because I haven't been able to find an affordable place to live. I'm a single dad. I'm, I work full-time, I work remotely, and there are a lot more people like me who are going to be coming here. And I think fighting this proposal is, is not going to welcome people to our community like we would want. I think that it will increase business in Winslow. It'll put money back into the community. It'll allow workers, teachers, people who work for the school district to live on the island so that we can all enjoy that as a community. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much. Next is Lisa Neal, then Laura Lant, and then we're getting to the end.
Hello, council. Lisa Neal, Bainbridge Island. I have a couple different things to say, so I'll just try to go through them one at a time. On 625 Winslow, I came to you a while back, and I urged you to sit down with Lehigh and possibly somebody from HRB, who is an expert in this rental housing for lower-income people, and really make sure that, once this is built and wherever it's put, wherever you decide, that we really have a path forward on the operation costs. The Department of Commerce put out their book, too, which is for housing development for this current comp plan process. And on page, I think it's page 60, might be page 57, I get those mixed up sometimes, that rental units below 80% might be covered by, their operation costs going forward might be covered by the rent, and anything below 50 will not, has to be subsidized, and that's going forward. And so I'm not, I'm not talking about this to stop the project. I'm talking about it to make clear that what I see is that the old model for this kind of housing is not working anymore. And we saw that in the Seattle Times article where we're having shortfalls, and, you know, things are being shut down, people are being displaced. And that's not the And that's not the solution that you guys are looking for, that anyone's looking for. So I really urge you to really dig down. It's not fun, it's math, it's looks boring to anyone that has, you know, isn't a mathematician, I guess. But anyway, so I really hope you really look at that now, not later, you know. You know, building it is not the final step. On item 8B in the agenda, it's the affordable housing definition change that Councilmember Quetzlin is suggesting you guys look at. And I think you're setting a later date to talk about it. And I just want to make sure that what I've said before is clear. What I would like you to look at when you look at that is make sure your intention is in what's done. I'm going to go back in time to the HDDP. That looked like a good idea to a lot of people when that was put in place, that ordinance, and it gave a choice, green building or affordable housing. And lo and behold, all the builders chose green building. So that's not the same thing as this plan, but it's the same idea. If you don't really make clear what exactly you want the result to be, you're going to get the result that's best for the developer. And of course, because they're not in this to give away money. So I'm almost out of time, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, Laura.
Hi, council. I'm Laura Lant. I'm in the North End as well. It's no surprise I am still not in favor of the 625 project. I think the site is not the best site for any kind of housing. I am surprised that the Low Income Housing Institute actually made public comment tonight. Apparently, Lehigh met with the owners of alternate sites for this project, and they chose to speak about it here tonight. Why haven't you? Why hasn't council spoken on the dais, allowing the public to hear the pros and cons of the proposed alternate sites? I mean, even the contractor who's got the contract met with the alternate sites. I don't understand, besides the fact that we own the property. That's the sticking point. That's why we have to go forward here. I just don't believe that. I do blame council for letting this project and this heated discussion go forward. It didn't have to be this way. There has been no robust participation of the public. There's been no information boards at the actual physical site of the property. There has been no ward meetings, and there has been nothing more than the minimum notification requirements. So I think that the public really, you know, there's a reason why there's a lot of people here and has been here for the last few weeks. We're just finding out, we need more information. There's been no opportunity for back-and-forth discourse. I urge you to pause, reconsider, or fully be able to answer the questions that the people in the audience are asking you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dawn Jano. And then Mary Rain.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. My name is Dawn Jano. I do live on the South End. I might speak to the 625, but I have other things I want to talk about. The first thing I want to talk about tonight is the issues that are on the consent agenda. 5H, which is the amendment number 13, which would approve an additional $119,300 for the Eagle Harbor Way, Wyatt Way non-motorized project construction services, engineering services. And I would also, I'm curious as to the reasoning behind that. I'd like a little bit of support and documentation for that. It seems like a lot of money, and I really want to hear council's reasoning for that and also hear from the city manager as to why that's on a consent agenda. Secondly, I'd also like to talk about consent agenda item, I'm sorry, I'm going to run out of time, 5M, which also authorizes the city manager to execute contract amendment to the transpo group for the ADA transition plan, increasing to $20,900. I'm super excited about the ADA project. I actually sat in the workshop as a park commissioner. I'd noticed that none of the council members were also in that ADA, so it's curious to me why there's an additional $20,900 just running through the consent agenda. Don't really know how that can happen without the public knowing it. And again, to process, and I know you guys have been hearing me talk about this for quite some time, and our opening speaker, Sarah, spoke about it, but I'm just going to read from what I wrote. This is regarding ordinance 8A, "The Development Standards for Affordable Housing Products." Council has not, to my knowledge, requested staff to draft that ordinance regarding development standards. Then why do you have an ordinance in front of you? It is important to note that that ordinance varies from the original planning commission recommendations, and I did watch that meeting until 1:30 in the morning. And why is that material indifferent from the planning commission's recommendations before you? Why have you not heard the report directly from the planning commission? Again, this speaks to process, which has been my greatest concern for this whole time. Why isn't an ordinance coming before council without council comment and presentation from the planning commission? Normally, this would be a three-touch or three-meeting process. Obviously, it's being fast-tracked, led by staff, prior to council input. This is disappointing. Staff is not our elected officials. Normal process would be, number one, at the meeting tonight, the planning commission would make its recommendations to council without edits or omissions. Commissioners would then hear dialogue on this and send the recommendations for development to ordinance back to staff. Meaning, two, commissioners would then receive that ordinance after the draft from, based on their comments, from the staff. And then the third meeting would be the ordinance comes before the council for a vote. Process is very, very important and part of the credibility issue that you are facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Rain.
Hi, I'm Mary Rain. I live on Halls Hill Road. Thank you. I stand here again, wondering, do you really care? Are you just doing your time to get through to the vote? Questions and concerns are not being addressed, but they're rather furthering the narrative that somebody's always complaining whenever we talk about affordable housing. Really convenient way of dismissing the concerns if you just dismiss the people raising them. I heard your response from the last meeting. Yes, you've been working on this for years and have a really nice website. But how in the world, with all that time and effort that you are saying that you've put in, do we still sit here without a completed groundwater study and without a completed comprehensive plan? Any spot zoning decisions in advance of that are built on trust and hope that your scheme will conform to the upcoming plans and that the required water and infrastructure mitigations will be available, viable, supported, funded, and implemented. This is out of process, out of compliance, and if passed, will likely be tied up in huge resources of time and money in litigation. I'm not even sure the Commerce Department will approve funding for a project tied up in litigation. Yes, you have a great FAQ on your website, but you're relying on info from your benefacting contractor. And I wonder if your due diligence around having arms-length studies traffic? Oh, please. It's three minutes to get through a light cycle at that corner. Only four to six cars can pass, and they are saying that they won't have an impact with 92 housing units there? Come on. Future residents, both Kobe and Lehigh claim that carpenters, landscapers, bartenders, servers, dental technicians, and hairdressers qualify. Have you vetted those wages? I've checked, and they don't pass the smell test. Lehigh does claim that minimum wage workers will qualify. Minimum wage on Bainbridge Island is $16.66 per hour. That falls below their 45% minimum qualification. Fun fact, Seattle minimum wage workers, $20.76 per hour, they do qualify. It appears you have not done your due diligence. Even Councilwoman Brenda Fontroy Johnson urged the planning commission to pass the recommendation on September 11th because she wants her daughter graduating nursing school to afford to live here. Congratulations to your daughter. This project will not help her. Nursing salaries are far outside the qualifying range. The question of support should have been answered in the 2022 community survey with 811 randomly chosen Bainbridge Island residents. Affordable housing at 625 only received a lackluster 43% of support, and it can't be overstated that this was out mentioning of upzoning, limiting to low-income housing managed by Lehigh, nor changing the current building ordinance to allow 55 to 65 but building heights. These are the concerns that people are raising and you are dismissing. Even tonight, we're hearing people say, are you doing anything to clarify your vision for this project?
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Ron Peltier.
Evening, council members. I appreciate your patience, listening to all the public comment. So I'm not here to speak for or against the 65 project. I'm here to speak in favor of a groundwater management plan that prioritizes the sustainable management of our aquifers. This is an indispensable thing for Bainbridge Island because of the growth pressures that we face. The current draft plan prioritizes so-called growth mandates, and it doesn't mention that protection of groundwater is a GMA requirement. I heard in public comment, I watched the video from meeting two weeks ago, that some of you have encountered during regional meetings and meetings with other officials from other jurisdictions that they don't think Bainbridge Island's doing its share. What I would hope is that when our elected officials meet with other officials from other jurisdictions, that they explain to them that Bainbridge Island has a limited carrying capacity, that we depend solely on aquifers, and that we want to maintain those aquifers for many, many generations to come. And it's highly likely that those people that you're talking to, those other officials, don't know, even know that Bainbridge Island is a sole-source aquifer island, or that Bainbridge Island is the only sole-source aquifer island completely dependent on groundwater for its domestic water, surrounded by saltwater in the entire United States. We're in a unique geography. We've, Bainbridge Conservation Coalition has had a table at the farmer's market for, I think, five weeks during the summer. And we've been educating people about groundwater. We have the groundwater fact sheet that was produced by the Environmental Technical Advisory Committee. We've been handing those out. We have posters showing some of the modeling that your consultant, EA consultant, has done for you, showing projected declines. And we've been talking to people about, obviously, about groundwater issues and finding that a lot of people don't realize, search of all, that we're a sole-source aquifer geography. One person thought that we got water from off-island. And we're going to continue doing that. But I just want to reinforce to you the importance of having a good groundwater management plan, whether you approve the 625 project or not. And finally, I want to just take a second to address comment that was made about me personally. I don't want to talk about myself, but I think I was portrayed as somebody who's always against affordable housing. Four years ago, when I was City Council, I supported the project at Wintergreen, and I wish that the City Council had done more to make that more of an affordable project. So thanks for listening and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thanks, Ron. Next is Andre Lorenz. Christine Tucker. We must have lost some folks. George Tucker. Malcolm Gander. Okay. That's it. Sean Sullivan.
Hi there. Thanks so much. Sorry I missed the sign-in this evening. Sean Sullivan, I live on New Sweden Avenue. I'm also one of your planning commissioners. I'm here in a personal capacity, but I'm here to talk about 625 Winslow. I joke that I want a T-shirt that says, "I survived the island's longest public hearing", at least in recent history. And we've been having a lot of late-night meetings in the last year. I have a one-year-old, I have a three-year-old, and while I'm here, my wife is at home putting our boys to sleep. I try to think about the time I give to this community as a gift to my two kids sometime in the future. And I try my best to help us plan for a community that will thrive and will prosper. And I want to build a place that my boys are going to want to call home to. This is an incredible place. It's an incredible community. But we also have really profound challenges. Our schools are shrinking, they're at risk of closing, and we all know why. Families can't afford to live here. Our childcare centers are closing, and we all know why. Our childcare workforce can't afford to live anywhere near where they work. Our firefighters and our police force can't afford to live on this island. And when that big earthquake hits and that bridge falls, we're going to really regret that our first responders are stuck on the other side. This project isn't going to solve all those problems, but it's a down project to start addressing some of those challenges. It's a start to building a community that we can be proud to have our kids call home. There's no perfect locations. There's no perfect processes. There's no perfect partners. But this is a good project in a good location with a process that follows the rules, with a process that follows the rules, and with a reputable partner. This location is just across the street from our densest housing already on the island. It's walkable to almost every critical service on the island, as well as transit. It includes community amenities, a park, maybe even a visitor's center. We can't afford to wait another year. The affordability crisis is now. We have a thoughtful and responsible project ahead of us, so I respectfully ask for your support for a public hearing on the ordinance, for your support for this project. I hope for all of you that you're not here until 1:30 in the morning like we were, but thank you if you were. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, with that, public comment is closed. Oh, go ahead, Lisa. And then that's it, after Lisa. Your final, but last but not least, for sure.
I didn't want to be the last, but I was hoping Malcolm would speak, and I must have seen him leave.
They left, yes.
So I'm here to speak about groundwater because it's near and dear to my heart. Bainbridge Conservation Coalition is staging those actions outside of city hall. We'll be doing those more. We are trying to get the public engaged. We're trying to educate and inform them because we're waiting for the city to do this. And I don't see anybody at the city showing up at the farmer's market table talking to people about groundwater. So we're a nonprofit, and I feel like we're doing the job that you guys should be doing. Now, I looked at the website for what goes on right now with the groundwater management plan, and I want a couple of commitments from all of you on council. I want a commitment that you're going to do a robust public education campaign on the groundwater management plan. When the peer review comes out, which I understand has been delayed for a couple of weeks, which is absolutely critical in critiquing the city's job on this important document. So professionals outside of the city are going to be reviewing it. And I think they're going to have some, let's just say, input, concerns, you know? I worked for EPA for 30 years. Anytime we got peer review, it was sometimes not surprising what we learned and what we had to change and modify. So what I'm asking is, I want a commitment that you're going to spend the money that's necessary to address the peer review concerns. I see consent agenda items improving, you know, adding money to all kinds of projects. I want your guarantee, and this community wants your guarantee, that when EA runs out of money, which I understand they are, that you will commit funds to addressing every issue in that peer review and that you're going to address issues that the community brings up. We have professional PhD hydrogeologists working here on the island, who used to be on E-TAC, which you dissolved, and they can no longer provide that input. So those folks are giving the peer reviewers their comments directly because there is no ability for those folks, like Malcolm and Melanie, to provide that in an E-TAC forum. This is really disappointing because I see you're going to try to establish a non-motorized committee, but what's going on with E-TAC? So please, I need you guys to commit to doing this groundwater management fully, wholly, and having maybe- and having maybe several forums. This is very dense, complex stuff. You need to make it digestible for every single person here. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. And with that public comment is closed, now we are on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. I move to approve the cons, 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 agenda as presented. Consent.
Okay, motion made by Councilmore, Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Councilmember Fancher Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we are on to council announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I attended the Bainbridge Prepariness Event this last weekend, Bainbridge Prepares, the Fire District, a lot of other people were there, and it was really a nice, nice event. One thing I want to pass along, the direction is to use a fire extinguisher. It's the pull, pull, aim, squeeze, spray. So it's pass, pull the pin, aim it at the bottom of the fire, squeeze the trigger, and then spray at the bottom. And people were having a lot of fun spraying the target over there. Today, I have some news to speak out on. First, I'm going to do on the 29th, and we're going to have a day without driving, all of us on the Kitsap Transit Board. So I'm going to get on a morning ferry, ride the Kitsap Transit Ferry to Bremerton, go to Olympic College on a bus, meet my other colleagues, then I'm going to ride a bus all the way back, buses rather, all the way back. So it's going to be a good event. This morning, there's some news I got to share with you guys. This morning was the Housing Kitsap Authority meeting. I'm a commissioner on that. And it was announced this morning that there's a woman on the island, her name, her name is Sally Kuhn, and she's been a very generous philanthropist. She's the person behind the Southern Cross Project that I've mentioned before. Well, on the end of Cave Avenue, there was the Bainbridge Island Childcare Center, of which someone mentioned. People can't afford to work, the people who work it can't afford to work there anymore, so that is closing. And so she has reached to the agency, the authority, rather, to buy that property and to build some projects. So if you could show the first picture, this is what, I went on and took a picture of it today, and that's the structure. And the next one is an overview of what the, what the current site looks like. So you see the childcare center there and some outbound buildings. And this is the one idea, the next part is going to be three, three separate one-bedroom apartments that are being designed for that project. Kitsap Housing Authority will do the renovation, which will be about a half a million dollars. And this will be for affordable housing, shooting for 80% of the area median income. And there's also plans to have extensions to this, another one-bedroom unit, plus another bedroom, another structure. It's a pretty large property. And so this is exciting to move forward. One thing that the agency had to do, which didn't have before, she wishes to donate it to a 501(c)(3) for tax purposes and others, which the Kitsap Transit Authority is not, but the Kitsap Transit Authority does have something called, and I wrote it down here. Anyway, there is a nonprofit edge that the authority has, and so we created it, we revamped it up and put it in motion, so that will be a vehicle for her to donate her money so that this project can move forward. So we're going to have at least three different families or individuals in this project in a few years. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Murawaki. I don't know who was first. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. So quickly, first of all, I went to the wonderful event at the library on Sunday, which was for the Sunday event, and Councilmember Dietz was there as well. He was in the front row because he had a lot more to do with solar panels than I did, but I really, really enjoyed the presentations. And then my second announcement, I sent out a note to council previously because I didn't want this to be a surprise. Would council be interested in an executive session to discuss an opportunity for designated off-site parking for the 625 Winslow project or for other uses? And then please share your preferences with the city manager, if that's what, if you have more questions or have a preference. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Schneider, Councilmember Dietz, and then Councilmember Frederick.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for reminding about the no-car day. I, I have a bicycle. I'll spend at least one day, because I do that often anyway, riding my bike, but I don't know about, Councilmember, I almost said Clarence. Councilmember Murawaki, that's heroic how you're going to somehow do a circuit. Good on you. I'd like to hear how that goes. Let's see, last Thursday, Kitsap Economic Development Group, we had a retreat, annual retreat, all day at the, it was the Point Casino that's way up in Hansville area. It's the Port Scallum Tribe Casino. Great event for us to, basically, leaders in the jurisdictions and business leaders getting together and discussing about how the business needs of Kitsap County. Sunday, yes, Councilmember Schneider, thanks for reminding me. I actually forgot. I was there. It was very good. Kind of reminded me, my old days in solar, we would get together and have those conversations and get very pumped up. Unfortunately, there's not a lot to get excited as far as incentives these days, but in the solar industry, we have a saying that the, the solution rises every day. So no matter what, the solution rises every day. The Saturday, I have my office hours at cups, 10 to noon, and welcome anyone to come and see me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fancher Johnson.
I just wanted to pronounce my name, Brenda Fanchroy Johnson.
Okay, Brenda Fanchroy Johnson. Fanchroy Johnson, I got it. Okay, I, let's see. There was a really wonderful HRB event at Islandwood last Thursday?
Yes.
I believe it was last Thursday, which was really great to see all the support for affordable housing on the island. And Representative Alex Rammel spoke about cohousing. I didn't savor the program, so I didn't hear him, so, but I'm sure it was amazing. And this morning at Islandwood, I had the chance to speak to a group of grad students, they were all here, they just left, about what's going on here, and had some really great conversation, along with Olivia and Chastity Malatesta and Dr. Day, a great group of Islandwood grad students. Tomorrow, I am with kiddos at Odyssey, talking about local government, which will be really great. Hopefully, we're not out of here at 1:30 in the morning. Thursday is the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Meeting, which I'm going to go over to in Seattle. And, oh, tomorrow, there's also a leadership event, which I know Anshu will be one of the panelists. I have to look at the others, and that's 1:00 to 2:30. Where is it?
Barn.
The barn.
At the barn. So tomorrow at the barn, four wonderful women speaking about lead HER, H-E-R, shit. That's all I had.
Mayor, one follow-up for me?
Yep.
Yeah, since I wrote all of it, I, so the Kitsap Housing Authority has two properties. One's called Finch. It has 25 units. It's over in the, by Marjorie Williams, and then the Rhododendron Apartments that most of you know about. And so if you don't think there's a demand for housing, the waiting list at Finch is 603 people, and 30, only 33 of them live on the island. For the Rhododendrons, 547, and 87 live on the island. So the vast majority want to live here, and I would presume they're doing that because they want to live where they work.
Or school district.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and just a few things I was involved in last week. On the 17th, in the morning, I was one of three council members, and we also had Laura Reiser from the Climate Change Advisory Committee visiting the Merton Cove substation, which was an education and something really satisfying to see. A number, I think there was between four and six staff people associated with the project in one way or another, and several came over from pretty far away in Seattle, or even beyond downtown Seattle by quite a bit. It's so skillfully done, and the people involved in the project could explain just how challenging the engineering and the, all the technology and the handling of, of very dangerous conditions. It's just been very impressive. Along the way, the question of the length of time it takes to get all the clearances for that kind of development, that came up. We are harder to get things through than most communities, and there are good reasons for that in some regards, but I think the council needs in the future to look at how we handle permitting for, these are projects for the public good. They're not, I mean, some people have different feelings about Puget Sound Energy, but they are essential to our survival and our well-being here. So as I say, I was impressed with the quality of workmanship and the commitment of the people involved, all of them. Later in the day, there was an event at Hayday Farm, a gathering of people. It was an event sponsored by the Bainbridge Community Foundation, which is a grant-giving organization and also an instrument for people with money to invest and money to, to contribute to the public. The Bainbridge Community Foundation is one of the connecting points in our, in the organizations outside of the city, and I think communication between BCF and the city has been growing in a positive way. I see that in other different, different contexts, so that's just part of the landscape here. On the 18th, while I wanted to be at the HRB event, I was liaison to the Utility Advisory Committee, and they have been working for months on the updating of the utilities element for the comprehensive plan. It is close to the finished product. Finished in the sense that it will be transmitted in due time to the Planning Commission for their review, but they have been integrated from their, their technically informed perspective. They've been integrating policies, goals and policies that are bringing things up to date in, in a positive way. So that's, they're, they're ahead of the crowd in terms of getting these various elements together, but this is, this is an accomplishment. On the 22nd, I took part in a Zoom meeting, providing the first orientation for a group of citizens involved in reviewing applications for cultural funding. The city has money to commit to projects on a competitive basis, and that orientation meeting and the subsequent meetings will be managed by a consultant, Brittany Kirk, a Bainbridge person who has worked in this capacity before for the city. Those are the things to report from the last week.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. All right, next we are on to our city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did have a report, but I would like to just respond very quickly to a couple of questions that were related to the consent calendar. As you know, the consent calendar is work that we consider usual and customary, that can be taken with one vote of the council. Staff works very conscientiously to make sure the title of the consent calendar is one that can inform people of what happens, and certainly there's backup information available to the public to read. One of the questions dealt with the contract increase for PRTIT, which is the engineer of record for the non-motorized project, for the Eagle Harbor project. That is a project that extends from Wyatt Way all the way to Buckland Hill. The engineering support normally works on behalf of the city to review the work of the contractor. In this case, the engineering support would look at materials supplied, it would look at payroll, we, this project is subject to Davis Bacon. It would coordinate meetings, it would respond to questions from the contractor on different approaches, how to conduct the work. It is typical for the city to engage the engineer of record during the construction period to provide additional set of eyes and ears so that the construction is done in quality and on time. The other question dealt with the increase of the contract for the Transport Group, which is working on our ADA plan, as we indicate in the backup material. We hope to bring the ADA plan in a draft form to the council around November, and then finally to the council for final action in December. The Transport Group feels, felt that they needed additional resources to conduct additional survey to identify possible barriers when we agreed that they do that. One of the ironies of this is that during the course of this engagement with the Transport Group, we engaged with the Parks and Recreation District, who's also doing their ADA plan, to do a joint survey for the public so that we can make it as easy as possible for the public to provide their input. The city bore 100% of the cost for that survey. We did not ask for additional money from the Parks and Recreation District to do that. Would we have had, needed this? Maybe not, but I think it was the right thing to do, to do the joint survey at the Parks and Recreation District. But nevertheless, we think that the amount of money is necessary and expedient to complete the ADA plan, something that we were working on for about two years, would like to complete it. And then finally, I would like to say, and I'm glad people are here, I, I don't believe in 45 years I've ever been called corrupt by someone who has never talked to me. So I would encourage someone who wants to, who feels that I am corrupt or unethical in any fashion to come and approach me and to bring forward the specific information that you feel that you have, and I would love to be able to talk and share that with you. I'm sure, as you know, for a city manager, being ethical is a stock and trade for the profession. So that is a serious allegation to allege that the city manager is corrupt. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Okay, looks like we are on to regular business. Item 8A is to consider ordinance number 2025-21, development standards for affordable housing projects, and schedule a public hearing for October 14th, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Would like to invite Senior Planner Jennifer Sutton to come forward and to introduce the item and provide backup for this, and also this, we have the city attorney here who can provide additional information to answer specific questions.
Good evening, City Council. Jennifer Sutton, Senior Planner, here to introduce ordinance number 2025-21. Key elements of this ordinance are that it applies to properties located in the central core and ferry terminal zoning districts east of State Route 305, that it applies to developments that propose 100% of residential units to be designated as affordable housing. For such developments, it would allow an increased floor area ratio, or FAR, up to 2.5, and a 10-foot increase in maximum building height to 55 feet. Section 1 of the ordinance also proposes a sunset date of nine months, or as regulations are updated through the Winslow Subarea Plan update. The Planning Commission held an extremely well-attended public hearing on September 11th, and after closing the hearing, discussed the ordinance further, ultimately approving some modifications, and then recommended approval of the modified ordinance to the city council. As described in tonight's agenda bill, ordinance number 2025-21 includes most of what the Planning Commission recommended that night for increasing FAR, floor area ratio, and building heights, with additional clarifications regarding floor area ratio transfer, and in addition to allow for a half of, a half a parking space for units smaller than 900 square feet. This parking standard is already provided in a separate section of our municipal code, and so this change just puts all of the regulations for these types of projects in one section. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the ordinance.
Thank you so much. First was Deputy Mayor, fast fingers there, and then Councilmember Dietz.
Listen to me. Jennifer, I think you can shed some light on one of the pieces of the ordinance that interested me and puzzled me a little bit. In the warehouses, close to the end, it says, In the warehouses, close to the end, it says, whereas prior to the public hearing, the city staff provided staff's analysis of the proposed amendments, including the consistency of those amendments with the city's comprehensive plan. Is this similar to a staff report? Or is this, what, what, what kind of work are we looking forward to before we before we have the public hearing and deliberate?
Whether we call it a staff report or a memo, but yes, it will include, you know, findings and comprehensive plan references and other information about the, you know, the zoning district and location and utilities, et cetera.
And will you address the ways in which the H D D P characteristics, the way, what it is that is providing the flexibility that we need for this project? I'm not sure I'm on the right page here because, yeah.
Well, the ordinance applies to all properties in the Central Core District and the Ferry Terminal District east of State Route 305. And right now, the flexibility in development standards is kind of described in Proposed New Footnote 8.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I've got that.
Also, I believe the city attorney have some response to it.
That's good.
Yes, as the as the council knows, all development regulations need to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. There's been some question raised through some of the public as to whether or not this regulation is consistent. And Ms. Sutton and I spoke about providing the council with a staff report or a memo that analyzed the consistency here. Ms. Sutton, I believe, has done that analysis, but has not yet produced that staff report and will be providing that to you in advance of the public hearing so that she'll have that information. And the public will have the information as well.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Dietz?
Great, thank you, Mayor. City Attorney said, I think this question may be perhaps for you. You know, we hear comments about spot zoning. Is 625 Winslow spot zoning?
No, as long as the zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and as long as it is not limited to one property. And my understanding from speaking to staff is that the that there are other properties within the area east of 305 that are within these zoning districts which could take advantage of this. It's one of the reasons why we removed all of the language in the ordinance that all referred to the Lehigh Project, because it it goes beyond the Lehigh Project. It goes to other properties within those zoning districts east of 305. And as I said, Ms. Sutton is doing the analysis for the comprehensive plan. Spot zoning is defined as the zoning of one or a very small group of properties in a way that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And my understanding is this is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, so it would not be spot zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hytopolis?
Yeah, I I had, I guess, I guess possibly questions, but really, I guess they're comments more. And I guess I just want to say that when I said that I would support some sort of a code change to facilitate the project, it was at the conclusion of a conversation, which we understood we needed a fraction of FAR, and we actually really didn't even need a height increase. And it didn't really make sense. It wasn't as we weren't tromping all over, I guess I'll say, the comprehensive plan as I'd been previously concerned about. And I'm just confused. So maybe it is a question as to why we have now before as an ordinance that is seeking 2.5 FAR when we only needed a fraction above 2.0, why we have 55 feet when we don't need the 55 feet? Because the issue of getting into that realm of the additional few feet is utility related. I think it was fire access on the roof equipment. And we've and we've gotten into changing the code for parking standards when we didn't need to do that. So I guess I'm curious as to know why these why these increases happened. And I just want to point out that at this point, we're looking at ordinance, yes, in an ordinance that extends beyond the parcel and then goes beyond what the what the project needed. And so now we're right back to the original concern that that many people in the community have that I share, and I believe some people in planning commission have, that, again, we were trying to get the comprehensive plan done as a holistic planning document before making decisions about projects like this and hearkening back again to how at the beginning of the comprehensive plan project, we, myself very strongly included, did not allow another project to move forward outside of the comprehensive plan project. So at this point, I'm not going to be supporting this ordinance, and I actually do have two alternative motions to make.
Did you want to make your alternative motions?
I will. I don't think I'll get seconds. I'm really depressed about that. But I'm going to make them because I want them on the record. If I get a second, that's that's fabulous. But my the motions that I am making and will offer again later, if somebody wants me to make them later, would be that I move the city council not schedule a public hearing on ordinance 2025-21 and instead direct the city manager to prepare an agenda item for the next available study session to discuss alternative sites for the 625 project to include 251 Winslow Way, formerly proposed for a hotel with the goal of selecting a site no later than the end of this calendar year. And I have a related motion with regards to schedule the executive session to discuss the disposition of our properties at 625 Winslow.
Seeing no seconds, we will move on. Deputy Mayor.
With reference to the 2.5 FAR, that was a figure presented in the plant planning version of the ordinance. It was subject to considerable discussion, but that was what they settled on. And of course, we could modify that number when we are considering after the public hearing, when we're considering a vote on the final form of the ordinance.
Okay, Councilmember Fantry Johnson?
I'm going to make a motion. I move to schedule ordinance number 2025-21 for a public hearing on October 14, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? Yeah, let's see. Councilmember Scheider was first. Any other poking?
Yeah. I didn't know if you were looking for a second or if you were making a second. I'd be happy to.
Looking for a second.
Okay, I'm happy to second.
Okay, seconded by council. And now, Councilmember, oh my gosh, I just had a break.
Thank you. So I'm just going to make a couple quick brief remarks. Again, I find it depressing to think that there's absolutely no traction at all on the on the on the on the council right now, but for the benefit of the community, I am just going to make a couple of comments. You know, we heard, because again, it's not just because of these changes to the code that have gone beyond what we said we were going to do. It's because at this point, this is becoming clearly a square peg in a round hole. I've supported this project up until the last couple of months. It is becoming extremely depressing to have the level of shaming and 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 pressure on this council to say that we don't believe in affordable housing if any of us, or planning commissioners, or anybody in this community doesn't believe that this is the right site at this point for this project. That's sad. What's happened in this community is sad. We all know that we have a dire need for affordable housing. This council has spent hours and hours and hours and years now, so is the planning commission on trying to do what we can to address that. And the idea that we can't reconsider this location, given the mass of the project that we're looking at this point and other issues is sad. But I agree, I think that that we're going to regret this in the long run if we build this massive building on this site. It's not what we anticipated. I think we have options, and I hope the council members here sitting next to me will at least give some consideration to alternative sites.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Morawaki?
Thank you, Mayor Matthews, and to my colleague to my left. I've been thinking about your motion, and I regret not seconding you, just so we can continue the conversation. But that being done, it is what it is. And this is also really important. We've heard a lot of comment about no public comment or no ability to talk. This moves us forward to next month. We have another public hearing, another opportunity for people to share their ideas and opinions. And so that's what this is allowing the public to hear and move on.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Dietz?
Wow, there are a lot of not a lot of lights on. Well, I just wanted to mention, you know, we hear about alternative sites and I have met with the owners of both 251 Winslow and owner of 251 Winslow had a meeting with Sarah Blossom and joined me. And then I had a meeting with the owners of the Pavilion Project. So two different meetings with these, both owners are well known, respected, and they're interested in their way. Mind you, these projects did not come into existence for us, anyone here, till about what, just a few weeks ago? Up until, you know, we've been working on 625 Winslow for what, three years? And that virtually the entire time of the three years, there was no other options. This it was just that one project. So just this month, we get two options. I think they're very good. I like both of them. But mind you, these are brand new. We're literally, I'm literally sitting down with these gentlemen, and we're talking concepts and how can this work? I mean, this is the very, very beginning stages of a conversation. And they in that way, they know we're near compared to where we are with 625. So really, I hope we can come to some furtation. Now, 6251 will require us to purchase the property, and where are we going to get the money? Maybe we can sell some city property. That's a discussion for the future. The Pavilion is not a city ownership. They have no intention of selling it. But there's some innovative ideas to to make it happen. I'm actually quite excited about that. But mind you, this is very early stage, and I'm not going to be up here giving regular reports on either of those projects because they're, these are gentlemen who are thinking things through and they want they want to do the right thing. But we're nowhere near coming to furtition with either of those projects. So to think that there's these alternatives and then therefore we can drop 625, I'm sorry, that 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 isn't, if we want to talk about process, that is not good process to do so. But I'm excited to have them. I want to have those conversations. I honestly think there's some possibilities, but we need to set that aside. It's going to take years before those come forward. And let's hope that let's hope that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dietz. I, let's see, I need to find this here. I just wanted to read something. Oh, I'm not going to be able to find it. Okay. So I want to save my comments for the public hearing when we hear from the public, but since this issue has come up several times, I wanted to address it. And that is the issue of the Suquamish tribe and the welcome polls. Because I want to say it, I don't want to say anything negative. Okay. I worry, I'm concerned that someone in the community was using the Suquamish tribe and using them to try to stop this project and pitting brown against brown, which is one of the most egregious things I can think of. And so I just wanted to read a statement from Leonard Forstman, who's the chairman of the Suquamish tribe. Mayor Matthews, thank you for providing the background information, including conceptual drawings on the affordable housing project proposed for the Central Core and Ferry Terminal zoning districts east of State Route 305 on Bainbridge Island. The Suquamish Indian Tribe is generally in support of affordable housing in Kitsap County that conforms to the Growth Management Act as we work together to meet housing needs and prevent sprawl that threatens our ancestral ecosystems. We are also aware of public comment regarding potential impacts of the project on the recently installed welcome pole by Suquamish artist Randy Purser, representing Chief Seattle's father. The Suquamish Tribal Council and the artist do not see the proposed project having a significant or damaging impact on the welcome pole or its purpose. Leonard Forstman, Chairman. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'm speaking again and again here, which isn't usual, but I I won't waste a lot of words. I felt I feel a need, I will speak be speaking in favor of my vote for the motion. And I feel I need to provide some rationale for that because I have I've heard and taken seriously a lot of objections in in these hearings and on the Next Door site. I have responded, I hope not argumentatively, but from my own point of view and with information to share, I've responded to some of the arguments that have been been made against. I really want to justify my going forward, hearing how much some people really care about canceling or pausing or pivoting from this project. But I also want to say something broadly in response to what Robert Drury said. He asked about the putative necessity of growth. There really growth is not a necessity. Planning for growth, which is a very different thing, is what we are called upon to do. And some growth, like like this project at 625, the city can directly sponsor in a partnership. Most of the projects will be only things that are made possible by ordinances. And we want to craft those, the development regulations and the zoning, the appropriate zoning density and so on. We want to craft that to so we get what we want and not what developers looking for profit will will build if they can. There is that danger if we don't craft our, if we don't plan clearly and set our program to have a program for the housing that we need. Because we are losing population. Our last 2020 census was just below 25,000 for the island. It is further below the 25,000 now. We have an aging population, and we have a population that in part can't afford to live here year after year after year on limited incomes. They don't have places to move to if they want to stay on the island. And they're they're, you know, house proud but asset but income poor, that sort of thing. All of these things with our aging population need attention and other in other respects. We don't hold on to populations when prices go up and this this lucky break ends somehow and so on. So we need to be providing for more stability. And I do think over time, in 20 years, we will probably have a larger population. But we're, we've been marking time, and I think it will continue because getting the housing built is a very slow and difficult process. The housing that we need, the housing that needs subsidies of various kinds and various kinds of crafting of our of our regulations. So I am not a proponent of growth, looking for rationales to justify it. I am a proponent of planning for the balance that we need.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. I had forgotten that part of my thing was I just wanted to read one thing that I saw on Next Door before I got off of there, too. I cannot get past visions of another Cabrini-Green in the making. What a shattering first impression when coming off a picturesque ferry ride to beautiful Bainbridge Island. Hopefully, we're not too late at this point because once the contract is awarded, there's no going back. Jim H. And then Mary Ann P responded, yes, Jim, think of this, too. History offers a stark warning. Cabrini-Green in Chicago began as a modern solution, but destroyed a working class community where people once felt safe. The high-rise density experiment failed so badly that the city eventually tore it down. It was an enormous waste of money. The lesson is simple. We can, we hear what they're saying here. So this is what we are combating, and that is why I'm a yes vote. Here, oh, sorry, Councilmember. we are combating. And that is why I'm a yes vote. Oh, sorry, Councilmember.
Well, I'm, what I always had my light on for is actually augmented by what the mayor just said. I was going to point out to the council, the many people that we have all heard from, who you all know are, have absolutely proven advocates for affordable housing, with their money where their mouth is for years and years, leaders in our community who have expressed concern about the location of this project. And I am so concerned about this shaming of people. There are people in this community who are bigots, who are elitists, who don't want affordable housing at the entrance to our community. I'm sure they exist. I think we've heard from some of them sometimes. The majority of the people who have expressed concerns about this site are expressing concerns about building a building of that size, whatever it is, looking like that, the function of it, the reduced parking, and these sorts of things. That's the majority of our community. And when we, when we or anyone speaking on our behalf continues to condemn everybody who speaks out against a project like this, the location of a project like this, as being these, whatever they are, these evil people who don't want anybody here at all, and this is a growth issue, or this is not a growth issue, which is, I wanted to also respond to what the deputy mayor said, and I appreciate his comments, because many of the people I'm talking about agree with everything that the deputy mayor just said. We need to plan for growth and we want to foster growth as affordable housing. I don't want any more market rate growth. I do want growth of affordable housing. It's so hard to get. We don't have to worry about getting too much of it, believe me. Right? That's who, I'm that person. And so are many of the people who've spoken out and written to us and are freaking out on Facebook. And the long-term ramifications of this, and then I'm going to shut up, but the long-term ramifications, the two biggest concerns I have are the divisions that are being created in this community that are going to, they're going to, you know, whatever, outward, they're going to affect this election. And that could have certain consequences, future elections, and whether these people are involved and what way they're involved. And it's going to affect if this project is a big looming mess that makes everybody really unhappy about it, instead of the way it could be done very well, say, for example, the other end of Winslow Way where a lot of masks could be hidden. That's going to set the standard for affordable housing. And that's going to set the conversation further and set us further back. And this is where leadership requires us to sometimes say, even when people are going to say, you're just trying to delay, you just don't want to do it, you have to, we have to do it right. I know I'm, I know I'm falling on dead ears, but I do, I do, it makes me feel better to say it, so I had to say it. Thanks.
And just, I have not shamed anyone. I believe wholeheartedly that folks can have their, they have a right, without being shamed, to decide where and when they want to speak up about housing. They can have any, and I have not shamed anyone. I was just reading what was online with many likes. Okay, we have the, going to call the vote.
Oh, can I just say one more thing?
Very quickly.
Yeah, okay, I'll be, I'll be quick. But I think the comment about falling on dead ears, I have spoken probably with hundreds of people about this project. I've had an open mind. I've been doing my due diligence. This has been a hard decision, but I think it's the right decision. But it's been hard. And I, trust me, I'm doorbelling and getting, hearing people from all sides. I respect every opinion. And it has not, not been falling on dead ears. I've been hearing people. And I think that's really true of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dietz. And with that, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposition?
Nay.
Okay. All right. With that, we are on to our next agenda item, which is review of city standard definitions for affordable housing.
Yes, Mayor, this is an item that the council agreed to place on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Quitzland. Patty Charnas can talk a little bit more about this. The, I will just say, in terms of talking to the Councilmember Quitzland and talking with staff, we believe that the effort here is to look at the city's programs that deal with affordable housing, to expand the definition of cities' programs that deal with affordable housing to the median standards, which is typically 80 to 120%. Patty Charnas can talk about that a little bit more. But we do want to also point out that the definitions are given to us across the country from the urban housing, urban development, to provide some conformity for understanding what our terms are.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Good evening, City Council. Patty Charnas, Planning and Community Development. It's a pleasure to be here. Before you tonight is an item that was originally brought before you on a communications item at your August 26 regular business meeting. A request from Deputy Mayor Quitzland regarding a discussion or a review of definitions of affordability. Staff met briefly with the deputy mayor and in learning about the intent of this discussion before you tonight, found that there was a desire to seek policy guidance, direction from City Council as the staff and planning commission work on updating the elements of the comprehensive plan and Winslow Subarea Plan, to consider where appropriate and possible to broaden the opportunity for all affordability's, household affordability's to be included in housing opportunities. Those may be few and far between because of what City Manager mentioned, our limitations on programs that we implement here locally. However, there may be opportunities as the planning commission and staff update the various goals and policies to address the broadening of allowing all household incomes to take advantage of affordable housing opportunities. So in synthesizing our conversation with the deputy mayor, there is a motion in your packet asking for that policy direction. Thank you so much for your consideration tonight.
Thanks, Director Charnas. Deputy Mayor?
Yes. In my good conversation with Planner Sutton and Director Charnas, the message to me was, it's on you, John. You, you're going to, you're going to sell this or you're going to explain this. And I hope I can do that. I could be asking for questions first, but let me just lay out what I think are the basics, the basic rationale. This item pertains to several different possibilities for mixed income housing that the planning commission could consider. One possibility would be inclusionary. Market rate homes for sale or rent along with, let's say, 20% of the total in a development, large or small, 20% that are reserved for income-qualified buyers or renters. That would be a project that would qualify for a multifamily tax exemption. And we've learned from people with experience in developing, in the inclusionary model, that it works when you're planning market rate housing in the middle, not at the high end. And you're also able to include the upper end of the broadly defined income-qualified housing. The market rate, you know, I could imagine a project that, where houses are for sale or for rent, some of the, some of the housing for income-qualified households might be for rent with an option to buy, or there's all sorts of things that could be done in this mixed income area. But you don't mix market rate with 60% of AMI or even maybe 80% of AMI because it, the project doesn't pencil, or so I'm told by the people who are pros in this area. Another kind of mixed income would be a project that is designed to be 100% affordable units, income-qualified units, for either buyers or renters, where you might have one-third of the households earning up to 60% of AMI, one-third of the households earning up to 80% of AMI, and one-third earning 120% or less of AMI. That's a mix of incomes where at the, at the, for the households earning the most and paying the most in rent, they are in effect subsidizing the housing. And again, this would be a project that would qualify for the mixed, for the multifamily tax exemption program. That's, that provides an incentive to the developer. It's easier to finance with, with that saving over a period of several years, saving on the tax burden. So that's, that's my thinking. And it's not something I came up all by myself and came up with. I've talked with people who know this business. I've talked at length with Federer Elliott. She has been in favor of this broadening of the definition for a number of years, back when I was on the planning commission, we were talking about this years ago. And now I think it's time, because we do have this obligation, to plan for housing across the full spectrum, up to 120% and above 120% in the market rate area. So I believe this, I won't call it a no-brainer, but I don't believe it's a controversial proposition. I do think it should be submitted to public comment. And my version of a motion moves it forward, moves the discussion and the action forward to another meeting beyond this one. But there are, on the agenda bill, there's a simple recommended motion.
You want to make your motion?
And there's another more elaborate one. I want other people to speak.
Well, make your motion and then we'll discuss. How about you do that?
Okay. I move to forward the following policy statement for final consideration in a subsequent business meeting of the City Council. And this policy statement is in four pieces. Do you want me to go into that detail or just?
Nah.
We don't need that for this purpose. Okay, let's, let's have, I want to hear from other people here.
Okay. Did we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. So then Councilmember Hytopolis, you were first, and then Councilmember Morawaki.
Yeah, I can't support this for a couple of reasons. I think that the planning commission, I don't want us to be reaching down to the planning commission any more than we already have, giving them any more advice or direction. I think that if this naturally comes to the planning commission and the work that they've already got on their plate, that's fine. I would think they would be prone to, they're very smart, they're examining all sorts of angles here. And if they want to delve into this and have time to, they can. But right now, they have their hands very, very full with addressing our deeper affordability concerns. And I also, I guess I'm just kind of, when we start down this path partway, then we have to understand what doors we'll be opening with regards to what benefits would be conferred on people who are in these higher strata that are above more than half of our community's incomes, sometimes well above, more than, more than half. So I just can't support this. I appreciate the need for all types of housing, but I just, I can't.
Thank you, Councilmember Morawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. And ditto, Councilmember Hytopolis. I was going to say the same thing about the workload of the planning commission. Not that the idea doesn't have merit, because missing middle is a huge idea, a huge part of our housing problem on the island. And we should find ways to incentivize weight developers and others to try to do low-income and affordable housing. But this is not the time for the planning commission to have one more thing on their plate. Gosh, they've carried a lot. We might carry this to the following year agenda or whatever, but I don't think this is the year to do it. And I'm just questioning, because you're at the fourth point, it says, while this guidance does not require immediate attention to the municipal code change that will be needed, and why are we doing it? If we're not going to investigate on that? So yeah, I can't, I can't support the motion as is.
Thanks, Councilmember Morawaki, Councilmember Dietz, and then Councilmember Fancher Johnson first, and then Councilmember Dietz.
Okay.
No, I think Councilmember Fancher Johnson was first. Sorry about that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I, you know, I think that I would support this, just so we could get the discussion going, just to see. Because what, what I'm looking at is how can we, and I'm not thinking about the higher ends, but how can we get more benefits out of what we're doing for affordable housing? And how can we use that to get more affordable housing as opposed to, because the missing middle is really a big issue here on the island. And I know that the planning commission had been talking about that issue. But I'm just, you know, I support it just to keep it live, but I don't know that you have enough support today for it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Deputy Mayor, thank you for bringing this forward. I guess
I got confused when I, I've never seen a motion that says I move to encourage. So it's like, okay. I honestly, I'd feel better if this came from the planning commission, honestly. I think you're on the right track. We need, I think we need to move in that direction. But I, I think, I think Councilmember Morawaki said, they have a pretty full plate. And then part of that is due to us. So let's make sure they get through what they have now. But I do feel this will come, this, this, because it has to. So I appreciate you bringing it forward. But I actually, if they were coming to us and saying, please tell us to do this, I would. But they are not. So thank you.
Councilmember Shider.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, I think where, where I resonate with some of what you're saying here has to do with, you know, the Kitsap County AMI is not Bainbridge AMI. Now, in fact, Bainbridge incomes do bring up the AMI for Kitsap, right? But not, but it's still not there. And so what I think would be important information for all of us to have sort of ongoingly is the translation, to say, all right, you know, we're going to base our definitions on what Kitsap County AMIs are, because that's what we're required to do and so forth. But at the same time, we can have a table that says, all right, Kitsap's AMI, 80 to 100 is this, or, I mean, the average median income is the average median income, it's an average. But we need to do the translation for Bainbridge. I really do believe we need to have that translated number right there in, sitting right next to the Kitsap number. And I think that would take care of Councilmember Hytopolis's concern because then we would, we would know, you know, is this above what half of Bainbridge Island makes or not, right? So if 120% of Kitsap area median income is the same as 100% of Bainbridge, we would like to see 100% equals 120, right? So anyway, I, I really resonate with that translation. I don't know at this moment, although I'd be happy to have the conversation, whether we need to change definitions or not. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just very briefly. I'm not putting, pushing anything down the planning commission's throat. I've talked with planning commissioners. They have talked about this. This is meant to be helpful, not something that they have to figure out, but something they can use. We'll see. I don't, if it doesn't pass, these are still public documents. My thinking is still available to anybody, planning commission or not. And it's not something that has to be changed, that it's something that can be made possible in the process of the comprehensive plan and the Winslow Subarea Plan planning, only if it's solving problems, not if it's making it harder. I certainly would, the last thing I'd want to do is to make things harder for the planning commission. I didn't think I would be with this suggestion. So I'm happy to go ahead with the vote now. But Councilmember Morawaki has.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Just want to follow up on my colleague, Councilmember Shider. I'm listening to her thoughts and her such common sense. And I think this would be a worthy subject to talk about in a future meeting. And our average median income is much higher than Kitsap. And so at that comparison, like you said, 120% of Kitsap might be 90% here. And that brings a whole nother level of workforce, including a lot of people who work in this building. So that would be a good table. But the question I would have, and this is something we discussed later, can we, I guess the day- I guess the data is there, but then it is, the next step is can we use that table to help shape policy? Or we have to still stick with what's required by the ordinances, but that's for a later date.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's four, two, three. Okay, so motion passes. Oh, sorry about that.
I I would like to change my vote. Change my vote tonight.
Okay. So now it's three, okay, sorry, let me start over. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay. It was close, I was I was trying to support you, I just didn't. I think that this was good for planning commission, I know listens to our meetings and they're so and they've already spoken about this as they talk about middle housing and things. So I know they're getting to it. Okay, next is introduce ordinance twenty twenty five twenty seven related to the property tax levy for collection in twenty twenty six and set the public hearing on November twelfth, twenty twenty five.
I think, did we skip one?
Sorry. Introduce ordinance twenty twenty five twenty eight relating to the twenty twenty six mid biennial budget update and set the public hearing. Oh, no. Okay, yeah, set the public hearing on November twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the people that are still here. We're going to drive and wait on numbers. So we we want to be brief. This is the presentation that you'll receive on the second year of the twenty five twenty six biennial period. We are asking for the council to set a public hearing on November the twelfth to consider the adoption then of the amendments to that this budget. I just first on the date, November eleventh is a holiday and what we're proposing to do is to meet on Wednesday. The twelfth is a regular business meeting opposed the holiday. That hasn't been set yet, but that is integral to the motion that you're looking at. So I just, so November the eleventh is a holiday. It is Veterans Day, that is Tuesday. In order to have two business meetings in November, we're recommending a a meeting on Wednesday, which would be the twelfth. So if you were to adopt this motion, you are basically agreeing then you're going to have a regular business meeting on Wednesday, the twelfth. So I wanted to point that out. Before Mr. Pitts makes a presentation to you, I will say that this budget conforms very much to the budget that was adopted at the beginning of the biennial period. In terms of a budget for twenty twenty six, that in total, all funds expenditure is about fifty nine point five million dollars. Of the total changes, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars were into one to two percent change of the entire budget. Mr. Pitts will give you a brief presentation, but the thing again, I'd want the council to remember for the most part is fifty nine point five million and changes of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on fifty nine point five million.
Thank you, City Manager. Hello, Council, Dwayne Pitts, Finance Director. Last year, council adopted. Go on here. Last year, council adopted a two-year biennial budget that covers twenty five and twenty six. A state law does require the mid biennial review of the twenty six budget for before any modifications can be made. It also requires a public hearing, as the city manager has alluded. There's a motion in your packet at the end of the presentation that sets the public hearing for November twelfth. We're going to take a quick look at the budget calendar, cover key assumptions in the twenty twenty six budget and provide some details about the proposed changes. As a reminder, council last fall did pass a two-year twenty six twenty twenty five twenty six budget totaling one hundred and forty four point six million, which was actually about one and a half percent less from the twenty three twenty four budget. This was in part due to the departments being asked to reduce their operating budgets by about eight percent. The current twenty twenty six adopted budget, as the city manager has stated already, is fifty nine point five million dollar for any changes. Staff is proposing a very minimal number of changes to the budget with a slight decrease of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is less than six tenths of one percent change. A further breakdown of that shows a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase to the tax-supported funds, which is offset by about a five hundred and nine thousand dollar decrease to the utility funds. Went back too far, there we go. Staff is proposing that the overall levels in staffing stay as proposed to remain the same as it is in twenty twenty five. And as council may recall, part of our balancing act for the twenty five twenty six budget consists of holding about three and a half positions vacant. And also, as planned, this the staff is recommending that we go ahead and move forward and filling three and a half, or excuse me, two and a half of those positions. There's one police officer that will be filled, one in accounting and one half-time court judicial specialist. The budget also plans to continue to keep the building inspector position vacant. When we prepared the twenty five twenty six budget last year, council may recall that we expected our tax-supported revenues to be flat this year. And that is exactly what we're seeing so far in twenty twenty five. There's some variance, of course, within the specific revenue streams, the biggest being the real estate excise taxes. But overall, we are trending very, very flat. For twenty six, we are recommending a revision in our forecast down by about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from our adopted budget, which is about a one percent decrease. We anticipate that with keeping with our modest proposed changes to the budget, the city's financial condition is expected to remain fiscally sustainable and strong for the future. The next time we'll be talking about the budget would be on November twelfth with the two public hearings. But prior to having the budget hearing, we are going to have a further discussion about the adopted budget and some of the specific changes that we're proposing in a little more detail than this evening. And finally, we are anticipating the approval of the mid biennial budget on December ninth. I thought we'd spend a minute or two discussing so far where we were at with the tax-supported funds in in twenty five. So on your screen there, you're going to see the results through July of this year. On the left-hand side, you will see the overall tax-supported revenues. And on the right, you will see the overall expenditures. The bar that is gold is represents twenty twenty five and the green bars represent twenty twenty four. As you can see on your screen on the left-hand side, these are operating revenues and expenses, I should point that out, and do not include capital project expenses. But as you can see on your screen there, the revenues for this year are essentially flat. They are a slight increase of about one hundred and forty three thousand dollars, which is less than one percent. Thanks largely to our spending reductions put in place in this budget. Expense growth has also remained relatively flat with an increase of about one point six percent over the prior year thus far through July. Looking at our largest tax-supported revenues, the top five lines there are our largest tax-supported revenues, property tax, sales tax, utility investment and real estate excise. And on the left-hand side, you will see our forecast for the rest of this year. And in the middle is our twenty twenty six adopted, what's in the adopted budget now. And on the right-hand side, you will see the revisions we are recommending along with the actual dollar change in the far right. Again, overall, we're recommending about a three hundred and fifty five, six thousand dollar reduction. The biggest changes being in sales tax, down about two hundred thousand dollars, and real estate excise taxes down about four hundred and thirty two thousand, which is slightly offset by investment interest, which is down for the year, but not as much as we anticipated and a slight adjustment in property taxes. The bottom line there is that those top five lines represent about seventy seven percent of our budget. The last line there is kind of a combination of a lot of other different revenues that make up the tax-supported funds. Moving on to the utilities, the only major change there worth mentioning as a result of our fee study that was implemented and approved by council in June. We are adjusting the sewer fund rates up for twenty twenty six, and that is the biggest impact. Overall, about a six percent increase for utilities. I wanted to mention two open issues affecting the twenty twenty six budget. As council is aware, the final building development and service fee study was conducted earlier this year and concluded. But there is a ongoing planned discussion with council about the fee changes a little later on this fall. We have one open labor contract currently under negotiation with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, otherwise known as the IM. That is the most of our rank and file for the city. It represents about eighty of our one hundred and forty employees that's still under discussion, still under negotiation right now. Moving on to the actual recommended or proposed changes in the budget right now. First, I want to talk about the the adopted changes that council already made in the first budget amendment in this year, that effect ongoing in in twenty twenty six. So looking at the operating expenses, you can see a list of various things that were going to impact or going to impact to the tune of about one hundred and eighty seven thousand five hundred for next year. And consists of the public defender, voter registration, prosecutor, tree removal, open water marine lease, animal control, and finally, the free mobile pump out. All those were changes that were made earlier on this year. And moving on to the capital, same thing. These were changes that were approved in the first budget amendment in twenty twenty five that are affecting twenty twenty six. Starting with the water fund, overall, you'll see a change of a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollar increase. And starting with our water fund, we actually have a decrease, which consists of water tank costs that were moved from twenty five, excuse me, to twenty five from twenty six. And also a one hundred thousand dollar wing point water line upgrade that was moved out to twenty twenty eight. And in the sewer fund, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade that moved out to from to twenty eight and twenty thirty. And finally, there was a change for this for the Springbrook fish passage, passage cost that was increased for six hundred and eight thousand dollars for twenty twenty six. As mentioned in introduction, overall staffing levels are proposed to remain the same. However, there's some modest changes to the staffing mix being proposed. The first would eliminate a current vacant surveyor position and replace it with a storm and surface water technician. The second would change the water resources specialist to the ground and surface water specialist. And lastly, it's proposed in my department to take the vacant financial analyst position and change it to a senior accountant to meet the increased workload and demand on the accounting side of my shop. Other operating changes for twenty twenty six totaling about sixty five thousand dollar increase. There's a wide, long list here, I'll just touch on one or two. There was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for these Winslow Subarea Plan that was appropriated in twenty six. We're moving that to twenty twenty five to take on the ongoing costs associated with the Winslow Subarea Plan. There's also an increase in forty thousand dollars for the marine unit electronic replacements. I just wanted to let council know that these will be paid for from the restricted police boater safety program sub fund, that's already in the general fund. And we also have a hundred increase of sixty thousand dollars for the stormwater capacity grant, which is a hundred percent revenue backed by a grant. And on the capital side, we have an overall six hundred and eighty thousand dollar decrease. There's just a few items there. The biggest one that's probably worth mentioning is the first item, which is a hundred eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar decrease in the amount that's needed in the storm and surface water fund for the Fletcher Bay Culvert. It was discovered, really an error in my unit, that we discovered that in our budget reconciliation, we noted that this project was fully appropriated in twenty twenty four. So there was no need to have that six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, excuse me, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars again appropriated in twenty twenty six. So this removes that excess budget, setting the overall budget cost in line with the expectation of the project cost. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much, Director Pitts. Councilmember Morawaki was first, and then Councilmember Dietz.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor Matthews. Thanks for the presentation. And so for the public, would you remind us about what the reserve is, what it does and how robust it is? And second, I know you probably don't have this kind of crystal ball, or I should be, you know, Bloomberg anchor or something, but I'm really, I'm really edgy about next year. I'm really edgy about what's happening all over, and I don't know if we can predict what's going to happen in the world economy, and that's going to affect everywhere. So we're going to have a projection, but it's I think it's going to be wild, wild west next year in terms of how, not just cities, but how all of us deal with the weird economy, as I think is going to happen. So if you mind explaining the reserve, you can take it later, suppose.
Well, yeah, Mr. Pitts can explain the reserve, but primarily the question, we assume, is the reserve related to the general fund? And the city's adopted a standing policy to commit at least three months operating cost to committed reserve and then uncommitted reserve. And that is by policy that is with a million dollars addition, and then we have an uncommitted reserve amount. And I can't remember that off the top of my head, but Mr. Pitts hopefully does. The the current, and by the way, the current expenditures, we saw for the general fund, about twenty three point eight was the amount.
Yes, City Manager alluded to, if you meant the overall general fund reserve, it is twenty five percent of ongoing revenues as a set as a bare minimum, along with a million dollars in emergency reserved, and we continue to be well above that. That was one of the things that was cited in our recent Moody's review as something that was a positive contribution to our overall credit rating.
And what is that amount right now?
Oh, I'm going to shake it from the hip a little bit, I don't have that number right at the top of my head, but I want to say it's about seven or eight million dollars is the is the overall required amount, but we are well above that.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dietz.
Sure, just quick comment, then I was going to make the motion. But so we, did you say we have about seven million such side? I guess my question would be, where are we investing that money?
We, so we invest out of cash in two reserves, excuse me, two government pools. One is for Kitsap County, one is State of Washington. They are designated for public agencies, and as we have told you before, our investment philosophy is first security, second liquidity, and third return. So we're not looking for a return and and I think it's about an even split right now between those two funds.
Yeah, okay, let's go ahead and make the motion. I move to set a public hearing on November twelfth, two thousand twenty five regarding ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty eight relating to the twenty twenty six mid biennial budget update.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded. I just had a quick comment in meetings this week with Mayor Wheeler. He was talking about how much Bremerton is having to tighten their belts. They're right now experiencing a growing deficit that they have depleted reserves and they're doing their mid-budget review. So in terms of thinking about them, I just wanted to give major kudos and really show gratitude to our director of finance, Dwayne Pitts and city manager for being so fiscally responsible and keeping our city in a in a great position. So thank you.
Through the mayor, just, you know, we've talked among staff and we probably didn't emphasize enough the basically four positions or three and a half positions that were remain, that were previously approved that remain vacant. That was in other, not a whole lot of, well, we don't get press, but not a whole lot of attention was paid to that. That sincerely helped us move us through, and now we're in a better position to at least to fill three of those positions and to, I know, especially restored terms of position in the police department that we had. Position in finance, as mentioned, and then in the court. And those all were badly needed, but I I think that was a technique that really helped us get through twenty twenty five.
Well, thank you for all your work, City Manager. Kitsap County is also in a hiring freeze, so folks are tightening their belts everywhere and.
And I apologize for the last comment, but I did want to tear off of what Councilwoman Dietz did mention. If you do look closely, our, this falls in the category of better be lucky than good. Our return on investments is higher than projected, which gave us a little bit of breathing room. We don't expect that to happen through twenty twenty six. We are fairly pessimistic, and we are somewhat pessimistic about the economy for twenty twenty six. And if you notice tonight on the purchase of the vehicle was the first, if you looked at the invoice, it was the first time I've seen a line item for a tariff on the invoice.
Exciting times, folks. Okay, next agenda, oh, we didn't vote. We have a motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposition? No. Okay, we are on to, we are in tired hour. I can tell it's after 9:00.
My can mayor, the companion action is to also introduce an ordinance for the collection of the property tax levy for 2026 and a set of public hearing for November the 12th. As we pointed out to you before, for our general fund, which is our discretionary fund, the property tax is the largest form of revenue exceeding $8 million. We are looking at the statutory, nothing more than the statutory increase that we're allowed to have for the property tax. What is interesting for the council, I don't believe we have this graphic, but if we do, Ben can maybe put it up, is our property tax pie chart. And that would probably be the most important thing if we could put that up. We want the council to be aware and the public to be aware in terms of the dollar paid on property tax by Bainbridge Island property taxpayers. Bainbridge Island gets eight cents on the dollar. We get Kitsap County gets eight cents on the dollar. Want to point out that the fire district department gets 12%, Parks Recreation gets 9%. So again, for us, it is our biggest single source of general fund revenue. We will be recommending that we increase it, the statutory amount for Bainbridge Island and, and no more beyond the statutory limit or capability of raising the property tax. And we would like to have that public hearing and that action also on November the 12th.
Thanks, city manager. Do we, oh, Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I moved a set of public hearing on November 12th, 2025 regarding ordinance number 2025-27 relating to the property tax levy collection in 2026.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Councilmember Deets. Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Nay. Okay. Next is establish the wait period for low incoming, low income priority at the Davillan Open Water Marina.
So this is something that we have talked to the council about. Other than a map of the buoys and the marina, we have no presentation for you. I think the council is well aware of what the issue is. The council has directed and the staff has attempted to implement a, to ensure that it's to the degree possible that the buoys are available for people with 6% of area median income. We have already said, and just to put anyone at ease, I did see an email today. Someone was concerned that no one who is in good standing would be evicted. Everybody that is there would be allowed to stay there. But the issue is in the future, as buoys became, become vacant, we always will look first to those people that meet the affordable housing standards. But the question comes forward, if there is no one immediately available at the affordable housing standards, how long should we leave that spot vacant in waiting for them? And that is purely council direction requested on what you would like the policy to be. And upon your direction, then staff will draft a policy and we'll incorporate into the policy manual.
Uh, Councilmember Deets.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Well, when we last talked about this, I think I was a proponent of like the 90-day waiting. But since that time, we have seen comments from some of the liver boards and they brought to at least my attention, probably I think all of our attention, that the issue of having vacant buoys is, is, I mean, I'm not a liver board, so I didn't know. But it's like having a vacant buoy is actually kind of a problem. So I, I saw one advice, just basically 30 days, I think is what we had fallen on. And I think I saw the comment 30 days would be fine. So what I'm here to say is I had thought 90, now I have just hearing from the liver boards themselves. I am fine with a 30-day period.
And then Councilmember Schader.
Oh, I'm just going to say that I made the motion last time for 30 days, so I'm still agree with that.
Councilmember Schader. I'm in support of a 30-day. Definitely.
Definitely, same here.
Um, we, we did get some public comment and additionally, we heard from the, really, I learned a lot this evening. So she was, it sounded like saying that no time was the best, right? So and we had been saying that, so I think maybe I would support no time, but if it seems like folks are going to 30 days, then.
If we, if we have a waiting list, it's a medium.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay.
It's only 30 days if there's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Counsel.
The idea was 30-day, like whatever window we're talking about is given opportunity for someone to pop up, even if there was a waiting list of people who weren't income qualified.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So I, I like the idea of, of, I mean, obviously preferred longer, whatever. I would go with the 30 days at this point. I like the idea of there being some opportunity for there to be noticed to people out there that there's an opportunity now and that way of giving a leg up to people who would be income qualified.
Remember, uh, Councilmember Schader? I think I just left my light on. Oh, yes. Councilmember Fanjoy Johnson, did you want to make the motion?
Is there a motion needed? It just said direction.
Yeah, I, I would prefer a motion. The motion would be that, that in the absence of any available list of someone at 6% AMI, we would wait a period of 30 days to see if someone within the targeted income group came forward.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. And I think we have one more thing to discuss. Designate one council member to serve on the selection jury for new public art to be displayed in the city hall map, former map room, now the engineering conference room.
I really want to be on this.
Okay.
You really do.
Okay.
I nominate myself. Okay. I nominate, there's a motion here.
Yes.
Um, I, I will, I nominate Clarence Murawaki to serve on the selection jury for new public art to be displayed in the city hall engineering conference room.
I second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.